Instructions for accessing subtitles in a language other than English are included on our board meetings webpage as well as in the description below. Instrucciones para acceder a los subtítulos en un idioma que no sea el inglés se incluyen en nuestra página web de reuniones de la junta así como en la descripción a continuación.
Hello, today is Wednesday, May 31st and this is the Ross Valley School District Board of Trustees Regular Meeting. It is currently 4:37 and I am calling the meeting to order. We are going to go into closed session. We have three items on our closed session agenda. We have a conference with real property negotiators for 199 Portius. We have a conference with real property negotiators for 110 Shaw Drive. And we have conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation for significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9 subdivision D 2 or 3. This is a special education program dispute for student ID number 1629835806. Alright, so at 4:38, yeah 4:38, we will recess into closed session. Alright, welcome back. We are, it's still Wednesday, May 31st. We're coming back from closed session for the Ross Valley School Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, May 31st. It is 6:05 PM and we are reconvening in, back into open session. We have a report out from closed session. We took action on one item on our closed session. And the board took action on item number B6 and approved unanimously approved the staff proposed, or the proposed staff resolution to the special education program dispute for student ID number 1629835806. And that was the one that we took in the closed session. So we'll move on to our public comment on items not on the open session agenda. So I wanted to pause to see if there's anybody seeing none. There, we have our correspondence and communication item which is uploaded as of, anything that came in as of 3 o'clock today or so. We have one is up there. And then we'll do our procedural items. So that's the pledge of allegiance and the adoption of the agenda. So before we say the pledge of allegiance today, I did want to acknowledge that it is Pride Month of GBTQ+ acknowledgement. And I wanted to just say that I'm personally really appreciative that we are, our next agenda item is our reading of our initial board policy for equity series. So I kind of feel like part of that mission statement around a sense of belonging and that students feel respected and celebrated for their individual differences and empowered to thrive socially, emotionally, academically really resonates with celebrating Pride Month. And so I would invite us all to say their pledge of allegiance with acknowledgement and celebration for Pride Month. Alright.
Allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, do my colleagues have any amendments or changes to the agenda? No? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to adopt it.
So you.
Motion and second, Brian?
Right.
Rachel?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Daniel?
Aye.
Alright, we have our agenda. Now we get to move on to what we are all here for this evening as part of our meeting. So item E1 is receiving for first reading and recommended adoption of our initial board policy which is BP0415 Equity. We have a presentation. Yes, we do. We have wonderful guests and a big presentation.
Yeah, well, and we just want to start off by acknowledging we have some of our parent guardian equity task force representatives with us this evening. We have representation from all of our schools and of those who were able to make it this evening. So they'll be helping to give the presentation and talk about this very momentous event here in Ross Valley. Very proud of the fact that we have worked on and have a recommendation for a board policy on racial equity. And this has been not just the culmination of our work this year, but of our six years long in the district, but our past three years especially with our parent guardians from our parent guardian equity task force. And so I think what I want to do at this point is just before I say anymore is just see do our parents have anything that they would like to say and as part of the presentation tonight or in general as we move forward.
Definitely introduce yourselves, both some of us know you, some of us don't know you, and then for anyone who might be listening, it'd be great.
Sure. Well, first, thank you to Board President Hamilton and to the entire board for allowing us to be here to speak tonight and to share our experience and our stories. I'm Ramona Little Taylor. I am a parent of a child at Brookside, so go Brookside Bears. And I, I think we're each going to introduce ourselves, just tell a little bit about our why and how we came to the task force. And you know, for me, you know, I know Marin County often ranks highest in, you know, education, health outcomes, you know, wealth, all of those markers, but where we rank the lowest is in racial equity. And that's from race counts. When you look at the entire state of California, Marin County ranks second. We were number one in racial disparity, which is not, you know, we don't want to be number one or number two. So I think the work that the Equity Task Force does is in alignment with trying to shift that number so that it aligns with all the other, you know, high markers of being, you know, one of the best places to live. So we want to close that gap. My story as a parent is that, you know, five weeks into my daughter being a kindergartner at Brookside, she was called a racial slur by a first grader and that was our welcome. So we did not feel a sense of belonging. We did not feel, you know, the joy. Like I feel like actually her first few weeks of kindergarten were dashed by, you know, the magic of that time was dashed by, you know, somewhat another child choosing to, you know, refer to her by a racial slur and was very adamant that what they were saying was true. And she tried to stand up for herself until she broke down in tears and, you know, just felt like, you know, I'm being attacked. And so that's, you know, part of my why is that I want all children, I don't want anyone else's child to have that experience that I had with my daughter. And whenever we connect as parents in support of our school district, which we love, we are all aligned that we want, we don't want any child, you know, to feel that sense of being unwelcome and that they don't belong on campus. And so I'll turn it to my colleagues.
Hi, my name is Sasan.
Yeah, my name is Jenny Liu. I'm a parent at Wade Thomas. I have a kindergartner and a second grader. We moved to Marin from San Francisco in late 2017. And I grew up in the Bay Area, so I'm familiar with the reputation Marin has. And so I tried to hold back my preconceptions about the lack of diversity. But as a minority, I have to say that when I cross that Golden Gate Bridge, I feel like a minority in Marin in a way that I don't elsewhere in the Bay Area. And part of my childhood, I grew up in a very white dominated environment and I felt a lot of shame and lack of belonging. And so my motivation in being a part of the task force is to make sure that my kids don't feel that way. They're biracial, but I want them to grow up proud of their culture and I want every kid who's a minority to grow up proud. And I want, it's not just for my kids, but it's for, I think, the dominant majority as well. That I think there's so much richness for everybody if we could get to a place where we understand that diversity makes everybody's lives better. So that's, that's my motivation for being a part of the task force. And I'm just really grateful. I know there were a lot of years of struggle. And I came in just last year and I kind of got to reap the benefits of that. And so I'm grateful for all those people whose shoulders I stand on and I hope to build and expand even more on what they've done so far.
So hi, my name is Linga Wali and I'm a parent at Wade Thomas. I've been in the district for 12 years. I have three daughters. My eldest is about to graduate high school. So my two older daughters, Tira and Malina, both went through Brookside from kindergarten and graduated out of eighth grade at White Hill. And now I have a third grader at Wade Thomas. So I've been working on the task force from the beginning. I have, we've had a lot of hours of, like painful hours, like frustrated hours, few happy ones. And now it's mostly hopeful work because we can see things beginning to shift for the better. And so it's, it's an honor to work with the group of parents and administrators that we've been working with the last few years. And my why for being here and for being on this task force is, as you know, Ramona and Jenny said before, just the hope of creating a community that holds every child with love and care, where every child sees themselves and know that they can succeed. I didn't grow up in America. I'm from the Caribbean. And so I grew up in a community where everybody thought they could be anything because that's, everybody looked like each other. And so when I followed my white husband to his hometown of San Anselmo, I was completely shocked. And so I'm still, in a lot of ways, still trying to exist here in San Anselmo, in Marin, where walking, leaving my house and walking down the street, you know, sometimes can be an ordeal because I cannot hide what I look like. And sometimes I do feel like I want to hide it because it would make me fit in better. And so I don't want that for my children and I want them to feel when they go to school that this is their community. This is their home. And that's my why for being here.
My name is Phoebe Jansan. I am a parent of a second grader. I am a parent of a second grader at Manor. I've recently joined the task force and also stand on the years of struggle and hard work and conflict that the team has made it through, so I'm very, very grateful. My why is thankfully my child feels a strong sense of belonging at present, right? I know that will not always be the future and I want to understand and help the community engage in the systemic pieces that may not guarantee that sense of belonging and get that addressed. This is a community of very well-intentioned people, but intentions only get so far.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, so I think that just opens us up to then the why that we are all here is to ensure and to help bring our racial equity mission statement to fruition. And that is to ensure that every child has every, all the barriers broken down so that they can succeed. And we're not only doing the work for our students of color, we're also doing this work for our white students because they will go out and most likely go into an area that is more diverse. And as part of our racial equity mission statement talks about is we're building the leaders of tomorrow and that is all of our students. And so we're doing this work on behalf of all of our students. But we've even broadened it to ensure that it's our families and our staff members in our Ross Valley community to ensure that as any of our school activities and events happen, and we do have a lot of them that involve family, and we need to make sure that a child comes to school, that there's a family with them and that their whole entire family is accepted and feel valued and part of the Ross Valley community. And that's why we exist. And so very happy that we set our goal this year to work on equity board policy. And we are right on time and our established timeline. So let's see, just if we can move on to the next slide then. So we didn't have the representation at all or? Um, yeah, so this slide just lists many of the parent members. And I don't, I don't think every parent who has participated is listed here, but these are the current members, others added in. Been showing that we have representation from all of our sites and then of course our administrative team, our principals have been a part of this group. Ms. Willis Marcy and myself and Eric from the very beginning. Our school board members as well. And so Shelley and Rachel and Chris have all been a part of the group as board members. And I think that having our parents with our administrators and with our school board and, you know, having that kind of close circle of folk who are engaged in this work together has been really, really important. And I, I would just like to add that when I have conversations with other school districts who are doing this work and that can be within the county or now through the anti-bias grant that we have, I'm now in conversation across the state of California. And when we talk about what moved our work forward, every time I come to, it was our work with our parents. And it was the push that we, that we got and the hard parts for sure that I think really moved us forward as a district. So we owe a huge debt of gratitude to the parents who stuck in there with us. And I know I am personally, you know, deeply appreciative and feel that I've become a better person myself through this process. And for our equity board policy, we have a sub, we had a subcommittee working together. So Ramona Little Taylor, who's here this evening, Chris Lannells Cobb, who we scan as a parent member of our task force and is now a school board trustee, Shelley Hamilton, board trustee, myself and Marcy.
Thank you.
I just want to add, I also really appreciated the leadership that the parents took in this group to set the agendas for the meetings and really set the course for the pace and what needed to happen. Slow down, you know, when it needed to slow down, there was leadership that said it needs to slow down and when it was ready to move forward. So that feels like it was a real integral and super appreciated part of it is the parent leading in this. Yes.
So I'm going to talk about the racial equity mission statement. Before I do, as Julia mentioned, I started on the other side of the table. I was part of the parent equity task force. I went from ground zero up to where we are now. And I believe that if it doesn't hurt, if you're not angry, if you don't stumble, you're not doing it right. And the hardest part was sticking around. But I think what drove all of us was our children. I really do. I think we stuck by this because of our kids and the kids we didn't know. And the kids, as Ramona had mentioned, that are going to follow in our children's footsteps. So I'm glad to be on this side of the table to continue with the work that we started with you, my sisters and my brothers that aren't here. So I'm going to read the Ross Valley School District Racial Equity Mission Statement out loud because I love to read it and talk a little bit about it. The Ross Valley School District is committed to creating a safe, equitable and inclusive learning environment in which all students feel a sense of belonging, are respected and celebrated for their individual differences and are empowered to thrive socially, emotionally and academically. We are equally committed to building the leaders of tomorrow who will combat racism and promote equity throughout their lives. Ross Valley School District parents, guardians, students, staff and board trustees in partnership will create policies to disrupt systemic racism and prioritize equity in our organizational structures, curriculum and instructional practices. We will do this by actively engaging, listening and responding to the voices and needs of our marginalized students, families and staff and working to engage in anti-racist actions that build a vibrant, inclusive learning community. This is a succinct, straightforward statement, but the work that it took to get to this language was a lot. We worked with educators, we worked with administrators of the Ross Valley School District, we worked with members of the board. And the parents took it away as well to ponder the effectiveness of the language. And the most important thing that we believe is part of the statement is that it's not window dressing. The intent is to bring this to the classrooms, put this in the forefront of all the things that we do as a district, make it a part of the cellular DNA of our instructors, our kids, the district, the trustees, so that every single word there is lived and not talked about. So our mission statement is powerful and our job is to keep it powerful and to feed it. So I proudly sit here and tell you, welcome.
So I can tell a little bit about the process. I don't know if this is a lot of that.
It doesn't amplify. It does go with the recording. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So where we're at now is, you know, really engaging the board in this work. As you know, trustees are elected representatives of the parents of this district. You know, policy is definitely starts with the board. And so I'll share a little bit about our process. The subcommittee was involved with parents as well as administrators and trustees. And we met and really wordsmith, which I don't know how many of you all have done live wordsmithing, but that fun with a group of people, but we, we hung in there. And after we had a draft, we thought it was really important that this wasn't something that was, you know, built in a, you know, closet that no one ever saw. So we then took it on a tour, which Marcy led, where, you know, we met with racial equity task force. Parents were able to read it, give feedback. The teacher leadership group, Delight, they read it, give feedback. Superintendent's counsel also read it and gave feedback. We thought that was really important for the board to know that we have been engaging stakeholders all throughout the district in reading this and providing feedback before we brought it to the board for review. And then after that, we also reviewed associated board policies just to see where are those existing connections that are already within the board policies that we can just refer back to so that this doesn't feel like a document that's just, you know, operating on its own, that it is in alignment with the other board policies that exist for the district. And so there are references to that. I'm sure Marcy can speak with a lot more eloquence around how that works, but that was very essential. And so we really did want to be, take the time to engage stakeholders, teachers, class life staff, parents, the superintendent's counsel and make sure that the board knew that those groups had a chance to review this and provide feedback before it came to the board. So I think that that's really important to know because, you know, stakeholder engagement is so critical to the work we do in the district. And I'm really proud of that as part of the process.
I'll also add that in part of our discussions, we talked about that our RBSD kids will eventually feed into TAM and that it's our duty to ensure that that racial equity policy of ours meets in order to create a generation that does not have to be deprogrammed once it gets to the TAM level, that we are working with a synergistic evolution of what it means to grow up to be an anti-racist in our school districts feeding into the TAM district.
And similar to what some of you said too about standing on the shoulders of those who went before, that was a huge piece for us to also be able to learn from that process. Both the results and the words that came out of it, but the wrestling with it. And so it was both in alignment and also to learn from it. And the wordsmithing of trying to pull together, I think our first draft of pulling together phrases, we were, we all went and like clipped phrases from the TAM policy and then we had the gamut policy and we were like cludging them all together and then, then went through it to kind of make it sound, make sense. But having those pieces to pull together.
One of the elements that you'll notice in the board policy is it doesn't have any specific references. Like if you will, we also utilized a racial equity action plan. That's in place right now, but just in the event that it's not called a racial equity plan in five years, we didn't want to have to come back and have the board revise the board policy. So the policy is meant to be evergreen, if you will, that it through all of our work that's going to continue into the future, that this, we wanted to be sure that this board policy stands on its own in terms of referencing all of the areas of the work that we need to do from curriculum and instruction, systems, practices, all kinds of elements of what we do in our schools every day. And so we worked really hard to craft that and I think we feel really good about where we are right now with our board policy.
So here we are. I think one of the starting points again was starting with our action plan, the action plan. And one of the unique aspects of the way that this board policy was developed was that we're doing a policy following on five, six years of work. And the intention is to resonate with the work that's already in place. So there was, we were in the second round of the action plan, the racial equity action plan this current year. And which I think was really, really helpful in building a board policy because we weren't building it from a theoretical place. We were building it from the experience that the task force had gone through in crafting the mission statement and then crafting the action plan. And so I think that really strengthened our ability to do this policy because we could stop and reflect on that action plan and the experience that the task force had had in what was difficult, where was it painful, how do we, how do we write a policy around that experience? And so that was really helpful. And, and the idea then that this policy coming from the board now, following the work that has been done to move the action into the classroom with, with students, which is really where it needs to be and where it's most impactful. And that the policy is set in place to support where, where the action has actually gone. So that's a, so part of the purpose and the context before getting into the actual policy elements was to, was to talk about the systems and the structures and the practices. And that's kind of like, if you think around of that skeleton around what's happening to make sure that it stays in place for future generations. Because our role up here is really to ensure not just the moment, but also the future. And as you all were talking about, students who are not even in our schools yet and this policy holds that in place for future generations. Any, anything else around the context?
I think I just wanted to add that it's really important to note that the policy is very purposely grounded in the understanding that structural racism exists and that the educational system is a part of that system of structural racism. And, and that we need to be very deliberate and intentional in our actions and that in the end, we, we are not only working on making sure that our students have a sense of belonging, but we are talking about academic achievement, which links to later success in life. And it is tremendously important and is in my mind.
And it is tremendously important, and is in my mind, the work of public education across our country.
And we purposely did not shy away from strong language. We use language like eradicate, proactive, anti-racist. We're not apologizing for the realities that our children have to face. And so, I think that's something that we want to make sure we're very clear about in how we wrote this as well and talked about the language we were editing. So, there are 10 points can extrapolate from this policy. I won't read all of these, but, you know, assessing the needs of the students that are data-driven, based on race, identity, it's important to know who the students are, what the demographic is, to be proactive in understanding that at the schools. Using the human resources and expenditures that we have to provide all the students with equitable access, making decisions with equity in mind to support opportunities for all kids to be successful. We're looking at, you know, ensuring that we have high-quality teachers, administrators, school personnel, technology, really creating an equitable platform for all students to be successful. Extracurricular collective courses, we do see that there are barriers for kids who want to do these things, and we want to make sure that the policy addresses that access. And building a positive school climate, which comes back to our racial equity statement, sense of belonging, joy, celebration, differences, rather than the expectation that someone should be something. If we go further to the next page, to the next page where we've got the instructor curriculum is very important, and Julia spoke to that, she'll talk a little bit more about the boost of wonderful news we got in that area to help us along that path as well. And really, you know, supporting the students that are affected by the systemic inequalities that they're facing. We know who they are, and not looking the other way, really helping those kids along is part of this policy as well. Working to bring in a diverse staff, I think that's one of our biggest challenges, but we are definitely articulating that this is a very important priority to stay on top of. Providing us, the board, as well as the staff, with the learning and professional guidance that we need to really develop and have the pedagogy and knowledge to continue to implement this policy. We will come back and evaluate the work we've done in this area as well, looking at the outcomes and measuring those outcomes, especially for those kids that we're really working to help elevate. And it's an evergreen, evergreen approach. We will confidentially, but definitely report racial incidences, so that I think parents feel comfortable and safe to come forward to our administrators to know that issues will be handled effectively. I speak firsthand that I am seeing the difference on my own children and what they have experienced lately and how it's been managed, and how everyone has come together. It's almost like a feeding frenzy of protection around the children, sometimes my kids that are affected this way. So, we're starting to see the results of changing the mentality, and number 10 is very important in that regard. So, those are just some points from the policy I wanted to raise. Did you want to add anything, Shelley?
I think, Ramona chiming here too, just in terms of the process. I know that we were, again, looking at the racial equity action plan to make sure that all of the elements that had already been created in the action plan, revised in the action plan, put into place in the classrooms through the action plan, were reflected, at least in one or more of these points, and use that as kind of a check and balance to make sure we didn't miss anything. The GAMET also had a lot of good kind of a checkbox, so it really was meant to cover. And this is really, the idea of the use of this policy is for us, as we go forward making decisions, financial decisions, teachers, you know, as we go forward making all these decisions about curriculum, so we were thinking about what are the kinds of decisions that we as a board are going to be making, or that we do make. And this is intended as a guide or a policy, it's not just a guide, we are choosing to abide by it, by adopting this policy, that this becomes a lens through which we can assess all of these different decisions that we're making. So, it's an important codification of, again, holding ourselves accountable and responsible to making decisions through an equity lens, because we will have adopted this policy. So.
And if I can add too, is what Ramona talked about, and also you, Shelley, is that typically when there are board policies, there are other referenced policies in there. What we wanted to do is have them be kind of centered, so that they appear, when you look at the board policy, you'll notice one of the last pages is the listing of other related policies. And so, on our tracking sheet, those have been highlighted in a specific color, so that when the next time, as an example, curriculum materials comes up, we know that when that policy goes through the revision process, we're absolutely using that one as an example, using a racial equity lens through our revision process with it, because with the GAMET sample policies, they are based on the information that comes out of education code and/or government code, penal code sometimes, and you have, we have the option a lot of times to make revisions to it to have them be reflective of the school district. And so, we want to be sure that when those other policies are coming up for review, that we're also reviewing them with an equity lens, knowing that we have this policy here as kind of our broad umbrella, if you will, or foundation, however with, you know, over which or under which all of the other policies come, because there's a policy for everything that happens in our school district. And as we identify more, we're going to be always looking through the equity lens with any of our policies, and those may be added at some point, but we'll be for sure taking a look at everything through the equity lens, through an equity lens with that.
And the only other thing I wanted to mention is, in a couple of these, it's really clear, and I really also appreciate how we look at social, emotional, in addition to academic, and look at the whole child. And so, things like the, like item number, the item number three, which talks about school sponsors student activities, we talk about school climate, you know, we talk about, so it's not just the academic and it's not just the curriculum, which are also super important, but that it is a whole child perspective on the policy itself too. I don't know, Ramona, if you wanted to, if there's anything else that's come into mind as we're going through these?
No, I think the storytelling, you know, I always root myself there, and I just wanted to share, you know, I appreciate that Julia mentioned, you know, that structural, you know, inequities, structural racism are real. And I can say from my own experience, you know, my grandmother did not know how to read or write, and that's the reason my mother became a public school teacher, was when she realized, she actually asked her mother, like, why can't you help me with my homework? And her mom told her, you know, admitted that she did not know how to read or write, which was a structural issue, you know, that she wasn't taught that. And then my mother decided that day to become a public school teacher, and she did, and she taught for four years. So, I think as the board thinks about this and how your role connects to this bigger picture, it is really important to know that, you know, this history is very recent and very present, even though we've made great strides and great changes in our society as a whole, and that it is your commitment to serve the students of this district and to make sure that both the students of color and the students who have the dominant culture are prepared to, you know, interact with a rapidly like global society, and that racial equity and having that lens is critical to their success.
And that it's more fun and enriching.
Yes. Of course.
All right. Speaking of fun and enriching, these are just some of the bright spots from our work this year and work that's built on previous years. There's right there under where it says bright spots, you can see a little piece of a headline from the Brandeis J., and so just recognition that our work is also a part of what helped us to become recipients of a $200,000 grant for anti-bias work, and we're really excited about that. We are launching, the whole process took a little longer, getting the grant funds coming our direction, and so we're really launching next school year, but we're beginning with a group of teachers working with the University of California at Berkeley History and Social Science Project on developing curriculum that is aligned with ethnic studies. And the state's been, the California Department of Education has put a lot of work into ethnic studies. It's, there's now a model curriculum, which is being implemented in many of our high schools, I believe in the TAM district as well, but we're not seeing it show up as much at the elementary level, so I'm really excited to be a district that is bringing that work to our young kids, because that work is, you know, our history needs to be told from day one, right, our collective history. So, that's exciting. Our book bundle project has just been fantastic, we've talked about it a lot, but when you walk in any, pretty much any classroom in Ross Valley at any site, you now see these collections of books. We started with six per classrooms, but teachers have been adding to them and sharing lesson plans with each other, and really learning how to use these books to have just very important conversations about race and about equity and about racism, and that's been super impactful. And then we had a whole district read, really, of Culturally Responsive Teaching in the Brain this year by Zaretta Hammond, to help us get better at having culturally responsive classroom environments. And then there's just, there's been a lot of community work. I think that's, there's a picture there of the Wade Thomas meet and greet at the beginning of the year, that some of our Wade Thomas parents here helped to plan, and there's a picture of the Brookside at their open house, they have a equity walk where all of the classrooms are displaying some of the work that they've done around social justice and equity work this year. Yeah, so I don't know if anyone wants to add anything to, there are many, many other bright spots to our work, but these are just a few that have helped us, I think, to shift the culture.
Was anybody at that picture with all the parents in the circle that have the story to tell, like, what was that experience of?
Yeah, so that was just, I think that was back to school night, and in kind of just the first year of launching, you know, racial equity or social justice initiatives among the parent community, we just, we really didn't know where to start, because it was such a daunting task. And so, I think when we met and tried to think about what we really could do realistically, the goal really was just to create connection, so just to bring people together and create connection, and then move towards the social justice piece of it in years to come. And so, back to school night, there were two circles, because what we noticed, one thing that we brought up was that when you go to the schoolyard, you see clusters of white parents, and then you see minority parents kind of standing awkwardly on the side. And it's just this, nobody's doing anything intentionally, but it's a combination of just implicit bias and people's comfort zone, subtle anger preferencing. And so, we created these circles, we knew that at back to school night, people would stand next to the people they knew, but we made them do an inner circle and outer circle, and then you had to turn around and you had to move a few places, one way or the other. And then you had to have, address these different questions to a new person that you'd never met before. I forget what the question was, it was like, if you could have some sort of superpower, what would it be or something, and why? And so, it was like kind of silly, but it forced people to just talk to somebody different and view that they wouldn't have otherwise, and that sort of launched what we were doing for the rest of the year, which we did Mingles, which we were just trying to highlight and celebrate a culture for each heritage month, and have food and crafts and music, and a discussion piece sometimes, and just bring people together in a positive way, so that we could at least just introduce them to the idea without having sort of the stigma perhaps attached with the idea of DEI in corporate America as an obligation. So, that was basically what Wade Thomas tried to do this year, is bring out the positives of diversity. And we tried to also have presentations at assemblies where we highlighted global holidays to educate people and to show them how wonderful and colorful and fun different cultures really are. I don't know, you have anything to add?
I just, I just add that I think our emphasis this year was on creating a community of belonging, and so we wanted to take away that, you know, us and them idea, and create a community where minorities and everybody, you know, not just, not just white families, but we all find, you know, space where we can be ourselves and get to know each other and grow together and raise our children together, because that's essentially what we're doing. And so, we wanted, at Wade Thomas, we greatest trust, creating a community of belonging. And I think we did, you know, talking about bright spots, I think we did accomplish some of that, or begin, or we are beginning to see the fruits of some of that in a community. And in last year, my daughter was in second grade, and she, you know, there were a few incidences of microgressions or, you know, things that came up that made her feel uncomfortable and highlighted her difference. And she would come home and, you know, of course, and talk to me about it, and I brought it up to her teacher a couple of times, and it was, okay, what should we do? And so, I was not, then I had to teach, you know, what to do. And this year, it was different. She didn't come to me as much, I heard about things from her principal or from a teacher after that happened, and she felt comfortable going to her teachers and talking about something that happened around race, and then coming home and being, you know, and being confident that she was seen, and she was heard, and she felt like this was her community, this was her space. And so, that makes all of the hard work that we did, all of the hours of frustration, and makes it worth it. And if we can build that sense of belonging for every child, not just children of color, but every child, then we will have, you know, we have created something great.
All right, so that leads us to then our board policy, 0415 on racial equity. And I know you all have read it, and so wondering if you have any questions or anything related to the policy?
I have a quick statement. Anything good in our community that happens comes with planning and forethought, and anything that's going to last takes a good foundation, right? Anything, any relationship, any building, it takes a good, strong, planned, mindful foundation in order to last. And what I love the most about this, hurt me in the beginning the most, of hearing your stories of why you got involved and how you felt, and then made me feel really good at the end, feel like how much progress you are expressing has been made within just the children. And it's wonderful to see the work that you've all done as a very strong base, so that the next group of parents and the next group of board members and the next group of children build on a very strong, thought-out, difficult, frustrating foundation that seems to be firmly in place. So, I applaud that foundation.
Any other, we do want to go off for any other public comments before we, if there's any other clarification additions to the presentation.
Can I just add, I just feel I would be remiss not to name Deborah McKnight, our Equity Transformation Specialist, and the work that she has done with this group, and also Epic Education previously, Kelly and Erica with whom we worked, but we could not also, at least our administrative team portion of this, could not have moved forward in the way that we were able to without that guidance and skill coaching and... And we are continuing to work with Deborah McKnight and feel really grateful um to have her there with us.
Thank you. Here, here. So now, want to see if there's anyone else here who wants to make any other public comments? Alright.
Um I am so incredibly proud of these parents and I'm proud to call them friends and um I think this is the best move for Ross Valley is to put your school to TAN district to follow in and that's TAN's goal. With the policy that I co-wrote, it's, you know, with a strong AR, your policy will be forever ingrained in the system. And it is a problematic system. So thank you.
Thank you.
A little preview there of what's to come next, because with our board policies, we have administrative regulations, so in some cases we do. In some cases we do, in some cases we don't, but it will go into practice and into our structures and our systems. So go ahead and bring it back up to the board here for any other comments or review. And I, I noticed that in the description here, it says for first reading, but um that was if we needed to, we don't necessarily.
First reading and subsequent adoption. If you, if you have, if you feel tonight that you can adopt the policy, you can take action this evening.
Well, I would like to make a motion to adopt the racial equity board policy for the Ross Valley School District.
Ooh, I would be thrilled to second that. I'll teach you to it.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, um so we'll go with the board call. Chris?
Hi.
Rachel?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Daniel?
Hi.
And Shelley?
Hi.
Thank you for all the work and for coming and sharing um the work on this and your stories with us and your ongoing commitment and engagement. Looking forward to um waiting on your
Go anywhere now, the work begins.
Thank you all so much.
And thank you so much for coming tonight.
Yes. Thank you. Oh yes, we have a, just a brief.
I don't have to leave yet?
Okay, I'm waiting. So we have one board member who's going to be stepping out here momentarily and the stepping back. Rachel? So that's what this note was about to. You mentioned that you, you will be stepping out shortly.
Sure when, but I'm waiting for a text.
I'm just gonna get back and, get back looking through the agenda. Come on in. Please do. Come on in. Let's, do we want to move it to?
Well, how are we gonna do setup for this? How do you want to do it? Okay, two of them, the stance? Yeah, how about that?
Alright, so our next agenda item is a student presentation from Manor School. And then after that, um we will move on to
Alright, so we have our Manor Student Presentation. We're so excited. We saved Manor for the last one of the school years, all of our five schools. Thank you so much for being here this evening. Are you excited?
Yeah.
Yes, it's awesome when you get to come present um in front of the board and um all your important work. Um so I'll turn it over. Peg, do you have anything you want to say to start or we just?
No, thank you for having us and I think they're ready to begin.
The students are ready to begin. Alright, awesome. Are you going to introduce yourselves as you start? Okay, alright, great.
Good evening, my name is Mitchell Conrad.
I'm Emma Myers.
I'm Natasha Lopezalza.
I'm Vivian Lozalova.
I'm Ashley Davis.
I'm Camille O'Connor.
I'm Charlotte Dazzydeal. So as you know, my name is Mitchell and this is our presentation on our Manor Student Newspaper. So this idea came to us for our second grade class when they created a classroom newspaper.
We came to Principal Peg at lunchtime and pitched the idea of starting a student newspaper.
Our, our principal loved the idea about like the student newspaper and she immediately said, yes. Since then, every two weeks, we meet in Principal Peg's office and decide on the topic for the articles.
For our first edition, we focused on events that were happening in our school, such as the Gold Country trip, Spring Fair, Staff Appreciation Week, and the Lapcom.
Speaking of which, we just got back from an overnight field trip to Gold Country with Miss Nicole's class and Miss Scott's fourth graders. We will talk about this in our next edition.
This edition in um focus, this edition, um that this is edition, this edition um is a special edition that focuses on different ways that Manor School learns about and celebrates diversity. Here's our latest edition that focuses on about diversity at Manor. As you can see, our topics included highlights for our student interview, an interview with a student, um a book review, and a custom social justice plan. Please take a minute to read through it and we um will answer your questions shortly.
I am so impressed with this that I am almost in tears. I did not know about Fred Kormatsu until I was in law school. And you were a fourth grade?
Yeah.
This is incredible. Absolutely incredible.
Also, at the beginning, when you said about the Gold Country future, it was kind of confusing to me at first. But so basically today, so Tuesday and today, uh well, we just got back like an hour ago. Not a couple of days ago, but like an hour ago.
Thank you for your commitment.
Yeah.
Were you all interviewing every time, doing some, you know, like interviews of other students to ask about their experiences?
Not all the time.
Specific?
I guess.
Specific parts?
Yeah.
Nice.
Well, what about, what about the one of the articles?
Yeah.
Well, the interview that we did on the student was about um her and her family and where they were from, what, what their background is, what some of their favorite food, what some of their foods were, um and basically their heritage.
And who was that person?
Very nice, wonderful. This, could one of you talk a little bit about the student survey? How, how did you go about doing that survey and what was the idea for it and?
I did. Um I hadn't really prepared for this question yet, um but yes.
When did we take the survey?
We took, we took the survey in January, um and um Principal Peg actually helped me wrote, write it.
We looked at the data together?
We looked at the data together and all like the, the polls and stuff.
Which, which students took the, the survey everybody or?
Um, three through fifth. Yeah, third through fifth.
It was oddly weird, but I actually enjoyed taking the survey and I know that a lot of people don't like it, but it was actually fun for me to, to read through it and do everything. I liked it.
I don't know, I see this as issue two. What do I go by issue one?
Um, issue one, so we just started this. We started this only like a couple of, uh like two months ago. Um because one day we, it was Miss Nicole's birthday actually. And we went on the field and we were picking flowers and we're like, what should we do now? And then Mitchell had the idea. Yeah, we were for Miss Nicole's and then I was like, I have an idea or we can bring Miss Nicole the bouquet of flowers and we can tell her the idea. So then we did and like Natasha said, she loved it. And now we meet up with her every two weeks and we bring out what's on every week, like the other newspaper.
Every two, every three weeks. Yeah, we work on it for two weeks, then you get released the next.
Yeah. An issue two hasn't come out in the school yet.
Oh. So this is hot, wait, ooh, hot progresses, we're getting a preview of the issue here? How do you distribute it at school then? How does that go?
Um, well, usually, um we split up and we go to the different classrooms with uh the newspapers and we give them to the teacher for them to hand them out to the students.
We do it in groups of two.
How do you guys decide, like of all the stories, like that might come up, like how, how do you guys work together to find out what you all want to make the paper article about? And then how, how do you make the decision about everybody's choices?
Um, do you want to answer this?
I can.
I don't really know.
I can, I can. So we basically, um, we tell the, we, we write the articles about what's happening in the school and the program on Monty play. We did, I, my class, I'm going to work in class with Miss Law and they're all in Miss Paul's class. I did that play with um at Open House and we're gonna do it, um I think next week for the entire, um play, um for the entire school. And then, um, and then we just come up the articles about what's happening in the school and what we want to write about. And if we're like, oh, what do we write about? Um, Miss Nicole helps us with our art, right?
So, so do you guys all help design it? Because these look so professional and clean and there's like no typos and I'm like so impressed.
And first we'll do it on a rough draft on like a
The PowerPoint?
Yeah. And then we'll just copy and paste. Yeah, copy and paste it onto um these papers.
Okay, I thought Canva is our friend. And
I just been asked you um to explain how we've done that.
Oh, I hear the Canva. Yes, we did. We used Canva and they're learning how to use that as well. I'm learning too.
Canva's great.
Raise your hand if you want to grow up to be a journalist or editor at this point in your life. Have you thought about that?
Not really.
I want to be a teacher.
Like it. I like it.
So what are your, what are your thoughts for going into the summer of the next year? How are you going to continue this energy and excitement?
Well, probably ask if we can continue doing it.
We already have and she said yes.
Success.
Do you have? And do you have other students who are coming into the fourth and fifth grade that you can mentor? Because at some point, you'll be moving on to White Hill and for it to continue on.
We do.
Are you gonna?
Um, my friend, um, I, I just found this out and uh nobody else in this group knows about it because I found this out a couple of weeks ago. But my friend who's in fifth grade who goes to Manor said that her family is gonna, that her friend's family is moving here um on July um first and she is going to be in fifth grade with us next year.
So maybe some new
New This is amazing. This is great.
This is fantastic.
Any other questions?
Well, I hope that we continue in your distribution, in your newsletter distribution, looking forward for the board to get copies of it. So every time you guys produce a new edition, look forward to having you share it with us so that we can continue to read about what you all are up to and what you think and your book reviews and help us to stay in touch with what you're doing. And I think we do, so at our board meetings, here's the way that our board meetings usually run is that we have a presentation and then we ask some questions and have a discussion up here. And then there are people in the audience and so we ask for a public comment. And if anybody in the audience would like to um make a public comment, please do, yes.
Will there be a digital copy sent out?
Yes, we send it out to the whole parent community so I can put you on the list there.
Excellent. Good question. Anyone else?
Resume builders.
So before you leave, we have a couple more things you're going to introduce and come on here.
Alright, so we would love to know, what did you bring with you tonight? So
Our families, our friends.
Would you like to, um Conrad, start and introduce who brought, who you brought with you tonight?
Well, I know she did. She's my friend.
I'm Princess, actually.
Okay.
My sister, my third partner, she, she went to um there as well.
Awesome.
And I think she doesn't present it here down in the old building, I think.
Oh, really?
And, yeah, right here. But unfortunately, our mom's up in LA right now.
She can listen to it and it's recorded, so she'll get to it.
I brought my dad and my mom couldn't come because she's taking care of my brother, my dog, and cleaning up the coffee. It has a lot of stuff still in it. Luggage and a bunch of other stuff.
So I came with my friend Emma and um her dad because my parents were kind of busy, so.
Again, they can listen to you and it'll be recorded.
Um, I brought my mom, my dad, and then my brother that's trying to avoid everyone.
Uh, I brought, I brought my mom because, well, my dad's all across the world for work. And my sister was with my grandma because she had to, my grandma had to stay because we went to the um overnight field trip. And yeah.
And then I did the same with my brother.
I brought my mom and my dad and I would have brought my lizard, but it wouldn't have been. Yeah.
And one of the things that we'd like you to do is because maybe one day, when, sorry, I said Conrad, it's your last name, Mitchell, is a teacher, but you may also want to be a school board of trustee.
Or superintendent.
Or superintendent or director of curriculum instruction, director of student services of principle.
Business, chief business officer.
Chief business official. So why don't you all just come back around here and see what it's like to be on this side of the table looking?
Where? Me. I feel so professional.
I'm on the higher power.
Well, this was a big
There you go.
We need your order.
I want to do it. It's to me.
Everybody gets a chance, everybody gets a chance.
I'm superintendent.
So when the board president is absent, the court clerk takes over leading the meetings. Uh, why am I?
Whatever you want to be.
Alright, last one I got. Let's go down this side.
Keep going.
Pass it.
The last one closes, so.
What do I do?
Say goodbye.
This meeting is adjourned by the state law.
And also, I want to thank you for coming out tonight and so I'm not sure if you'll be able to go this evening, but you might swirl.
Me!
If you have that chip, can you give it out to the parents?
They'll probably lead some of yours.
Thank you.
They might, yes.
Six percent off.
Thank you all. Keep your awesome newspaper up.
Thank you.
And thank you for doing so much.
Thank you for helping us.
The next edition.
They do, you gotta roll. Thank you, you got a role.
Thank you. And thank you for coming and bringing your fabulous children.
Let's go. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, after a very short, uh, intermission there, as people came and went from that last agenda item, we are continuing on. Um, with item G, our action items. And our first item tonight is recommended receipt of the Ross Valley School District 7-11 Advisory Committee Report and approval of resolution fourteen dash two-two dash two-three to declare the Deer Park site as exempt surplus property, commence noticing requirements pursuant to Education Code seventeen four-eight-five, and find that the sale of Deer Park site exempt from the California, um, and find that the sale of the Deer Park site is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act.
I'm sorry, we do have our interpreter here.
Okay, yes, we do have our interpreter here in case, um.
Hi, Alberto. Did you have any?
If, if, if there's anyone here who would like interpretation, just raise your hand, we can get headsets for you. Great, okay. So we'll, um, conduct our business as we always do with a presentation, uh, of this agenda item. Any clarification questions from the board, we'll go out for public comment and then bring it back to the board. All right, Marcy?
All right, we'll just start us off here that, um, tonight's very exciting because it is, um, another step in the process that we've been engaged in, um, for now, almost exactly, maybe a little over a year, um, since May two thousand twenty-two. Um, we've been, um, in dialogue, working with the Fairfax San and Somo Children's Center, um, to, um, address some safety issues that, um, had, had a whiz in and, um, through that. And we're looking at, um, as we know from the law history, I've been meeting with them regularly, um, in order to get to the pathway in which, um, the Children's Center can continue to thrive and remain at the Deer Park site. And one element that we had to go to in order to get to that end part is to go through the seven-eleven, um, process to see if then, it had been done many, many years ago, but it had been long enough ago that we needed to go through the seven-eleven committee process again for determining if the, uh, property at one ninety-nine forty is the Deer Park site, um, is deemed as surplus. And so the, um, seven-eleven committee was convened in, um, roughly, it was, I think, November, um, ninth of a regular board meeting, as one of the board of trustees authorized the formation of a seven-eleven committee. And, um, there were a couple of issues that occurred in terms of starting to get the committee off and running. Um, but they did have, I think, six meetings you all had, Chris?
Totally.
A totally, um, meetings in there, all listed on, um, on our board document here at the background. And all the history, um, there related to, um, where we are this evening to hear or to receive the report from the seven-eleven committee. And then through the resolution, as Shelley mentioned with, um, as she was reading the agenda item, there are a number of elements related to the resolution. And one of those is to, um, have the board make a determination to accept the seven-eleven committee's report, to declare the property surplus. And then also, um, to note that, um, the, uh, there are some education code sections, um, that, uh, take us to the next step and find out the sale of the Deer Park property is exempt from CEQA, the California Environmental Qualities Act. Um, and so, um, we have, uh, the resolution as well as some, um, uh, accompanying documents that are, um, up there as well. So tonight's kind of a big next step in, um, the work that has been engaged in, um, for over a year in this process. And Chris, I know you were a member of the seven-eleven committee. And we had, Taiyu was here, but she must've had to have left. We were running a little later than she thought.
Well, we do have seven members. Um, first, we had Janet Garvin, who was the chair. She did a really nice job. We had Brad Bauer. We had myself, Max Edwards, Claudia Hoco, Taiyu Naoki, as we had mentioned, and Justin Taplin. And we did have our meetings and, and produced the report. And, uh, again, I just wanna say thank you to them and recognize them as well.
I'd like to second to thank you as well because the time commitment, uh, primarily volunteers coming forward from the community to give their time and energy to this was a lot. And, uh, very public. Um, and strenuous at times, we thank all of those that did this for the seven-eleven committee.
Could you please speak up? It's very difficult to hear.
Sure, we will, we will, we've got a, um, speaker in the back, so we're gonna go ahead and turn the, we'll turn the amplifier in the back up so that you can hear more. Go ahead, turn that up if you.
Thank you.
Okay. Were there any, um, clarification questions on the resolution for this evening? I think as Marcy mentioned, we are receiving the report. Then we have part of the act is to actually declare whether or not we're gonna actually declare the property surplus, um, acknowledge the exemption, the CEQA exemption, and then to initiate the next step, which is, um, notification to the Naylor Act entities, which is required under the ed code that we're following through the surplusing, uh, property ed code. Um, and so we can then move forward on that part of it, which again, just keeps the process, um, moving forward. So that's, that's the purpose for this resolution tonight is to take all of those acts together so we can keep it all moving forward. So. I know it's, we, we've had updates, so if there's any other specific questions or clarifications, if not, we'll go out and do public comment. And we can come back for discussion. All right, I'm not seeing any clarification questions. We do have some public comment here. Um, so we will go ahead and, um, with public comments, as always, we'll do three minutes at the podium. Just come up to one of the tables here. Um, I believe the microphones are on, they're not amplified, but they are, uh, microphones for recording. So you have three minutes of public comment. Rachel.
I know what I did today, cause I might have to leave.
Yes, Rachel might have to step up. Chris, could you do the timing? So we'll have a alarm that'll go off at two minutes thirty seconds, so you know you have thirty seconds to wrap it up. Um, and let's start with, uh, Bobby Wunsch.
My comments on the resolution relating to the terms and conditions, I think that must be next.
That's, that, that is an attachment to this one, so go ahead and come on up here. And just, again, just give us your name and everything in the microphone so we can have it.
Uh, Bobby Wunsch, a fifty-year resident of San and Somo. My children all went through the Ross Valley School District and, um, Archie Williams High School. Um, I'm concerned, um, about the terms and conditions that you have laid out, uh, for the sale of the property. And I'd like to just caution on three items. Uh, it's my understanding that you were enthusiastic about the proposal by the Marin County Office of Education to take over the property and rehabilitate it. And I would hope that you would not pass the terms and conditions, but you would push to have more discussion with the Marin County Office of Ed, uh, because of the approach that they are taking, uh, to this property. Secondly, I think requiring a seventy-five thousand dollar non-refundable deposit by a community-based organization that serves low-income children who live in the district makes no sense. In my mind, it's robbery. There's nothing wrong with a deposit, but non-refundable because the arrangement could fall apart for any number of reasons, not necessarily the fault of the daycare center. And thirdly, it seems to me that it would be helpful to the whole community to have a very in-depth public discussion of the terms and conditions, rather than simply posting the terms and conditions on the website, expecting everyone who reads them to understand what they are and to be able to comment on them without hearing a full discussion of the terms and conditions. So I would hope that in your discussion period tonight, you would go into detail about each one of the terms and conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Kanan?
So I have a couple of comments about the seven-eleven process, which I attended most of the meetings, and also about the resolution. Um, the seven-eleven committee provides you with a lot of links about notices about the public hearing, but what it doesn't provide in any detail at all about the explicit and exhaustive support specifically for, for the center. It's not in the recommendations. It is in the report, it's in the findings, but it was explicitly not named in the findings. And despite advocacy, strong advocacy to the, uh, from the contract for at least two committee members, there are no details that would help you understand the overwhelming support specifically for the center and for doing whatever is necessary to facilitate and enable remaining at Deer Park, including significant support for low-cost transfer. By exact example, the sum total you have, you could have about the public hearing is the following. The committee heard public input from thirty-seven community members. That is the only information you are being provided about a meeting that was noticed in at least six different places that you have links for. The members apparently were instructed by your lawyer not to take notes. There's no recording of that meeting. There's no notation about the number of people who spoke in favor or against the center. And I'll tell you, a hundred percent of the speakers spoke specifically about the center, including importantly, our county supervisor, a staff person from the Marin Community Foundation, the Fairfax co-mayor, a former Fairfax mayor, representatives of faith communities, and at least thirty other speakers, many of whom were Spanish speakers, all unanimous. And our supervisor and MCF specifically mentioned the need for a low-cost transfer. These are your partners. Also excluded from the report was any analysis of more than a hundred and eighty written comments, which you have, but at least twenty-five of them explicitly without prompting, supported a low or no-cost transfer. So my comments regarding tonight's actions. Why are you opposed to accept a resolution that mushes a whole bunch of critical decisions together? When Shelley and Marcy described what was in it, they did not specifically call out the terms and conditions. I would strongly encourage you to pull that. That does not need to be included in tonight's resolution. Why accept a resolution the same night it's being presented? Not just any resolution, but one that goes so far beyond acceptance of the seven-eleven committee, of the surplus decision, and of the Naylor Act. You can do that. If you're as enthusiastic, enthusiastic as many of us are about the possibilities of a county-wide educational partner assuming liability for the center, then provide extra time for MCOE to do due diligence and to pursue all avenues to exhaustion. The seven-eleven committee process took far longer than anticipated, doing no part to the center. Add three or four months into the timeline to enable MCOE to do its work. And then if that's not successful, allow the center to continue exploring financing options and for others to get involved in helping you come up with a more reasonable discounting process that addresses the community benefit the center has provided.
Thank you.
Focus on one rigid definition. If you want this to make, to work, please take more time and find a reasonable path forward.
Thank you.
Too much is being compressed in a short amount of time now that we're this close to a great solution.
Thank you. Heidi Toski?
Hey, everyone. Um, I'm just gonna read some notes, um, that I've taken that I wanted to share with everyone. Um, first off, I wanted to make sure that the board knows how grateful the center is uh, for the efforts of the entire school district and MCOE to consider an arrangement that keeps us true to our mission and provides a home for the future. I believe that supporting early childhood education is an investment in our community's future for greater equity and economic growth in Marin County. ECE services like Fairfax San and Somo Children's Centers have proven to be an equalizing force in addressing discrimination and racial disparities in communities everywhere. We are committed to providing subsidized ECE services to low-income children and their, and their families well into the future. Our programs support marginalized families within our privileged and primarily white county of Marin. I applaud Ross Valley School District, its board, and Marin Community, Marin County Office of Education as champions for their commitment to supporting children and families. And I truly look forward to our continued work together in the future as we move towards a final resolution on the Deer Park property. I do have one comment, um, on exhibit C that I would just like to point out for you guys' consideration. I'd like to ask you to consider taking out the word primarily in both of the sections under general and permitted uses, only because, um, our funding contracts do not allow us to enroll families based on where a child attends school. Enrollment is based on eligibility and need, and that's the only thing we can consider. Um, so I believe you guys, when you, everyone has said that they want this deal to happen. Uh, I just wanna make sure that you guys understand, um, from our position, what we can do. And as that document reads, and I know it's not intended this way, but when I read it, I feel like the center's being set up to fail because we can't guarantee that, uh, primarily, you know, that, I forget what it says, but when it says primarily RVSD, uh, students, but not exclusively, what, what's the measurement for primarily? What's the measurement for not exclusively? What about our infant and toddler program? What about our preschool? How, what about a family who moves, is living in Fairfax or San and Somo, enrolls their child, loses their housing, moves to someplace else in Marin County, and because there's over five hundred children just on the subsidized childcare waiting list, not, not to say how many families, just in general, are waiting for childcare. Families will commute in because they need the service in order to support their family. So I'm just concerned that that, that that, those, that wording is, is not beneficial to our deal. And I know we can talk about this in the work group and I just wanted to point that out so you guys have the information about what we can do on our part as far as certain families, which is, as the district has limitations around things that you can do, we have, you know, similar limitations, just in different ways, so. Um, I appreciate your time and the time of your dedicated staff, as well as the opportunity afforded to me to come before you and share my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Point of clarification, did you say the word primarily was the one you were trying to?
Yes, that was the one I'm just.
Under general?
Wondering about.
Thank you.
It's under, uh, the general and under the, on the bottom of the page of that same document.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we'll go ahead and bring it back up to the board, uh, for further discussion. Um, one point, um, clarification on the process, uh, that we're in here this evening in terms of, I, I know there was some conversation, some questions about the terms and conditions. And again, that is part of, um, part of being able to move this forward tonight is that the, the next step in this process, um, that can't be started until we take these, take this act is to then notify, um, the entities in our county, the Naylor Act entities. I know we've had some updates on this before. Um, but there's, um, legal requirements that when a, a school district, um, surpleases a property and intends to sell it, there are certain public entities that have first, um, first, write a first refusal, if you will. Um, and those have to, the town of Fairfax, the county of Marin, and county open space and Parks and Open Rack. So in order for us to get that notification process going, which, um, takes, they then get sixty days, um, to respond to that notification when we notify our intent to sell. And so this, these documents, um, and those terms and conditions are meant to let entities who might be interested in purchasing the process, either the Naylor Act entities or the Children's Center or the Marin County Office of Education, what, um, what our intention is with the property. Um, so that's part of moving it forward. Um, and so this also will help our, kind of double track that we're on with both the Children's Center and the conversations with MCOE moving forward as well. So that, um, depending on how all of the feasibility works out and how that works out, that, that, that timeframe will be moved forward and that we can continue to act expeditiously. Uh, once MCOE's feasibility is completed, that we will have already taken this act so that we can then continue to move forward um, rather than waiting, um, and starting the clock ticking on that sixty days. Um, we have also already had conversations way back, I don't know how many months ago, we had conversations with the county of Marin and the town of Fairfax to let them know what the process is, so they're aware of kind of the, the steps in this process. Um, so that they'll, and none of them had expressed any interest in purchasing the property, so. Um, but, but we do have to go through that notification.
Can I ask a question? I heard a comment earlier that it's a seventy-five thousand dollar non-refundable?
It's refundable.
It is refundable.
It's refundable. There's a couple, in, in the attachment, there's, uh, a deposit schedule. There's a couple, in, in the attachment, there's a deposit schedule. And so the initial seventy-five thousand is refundable. Then there's another deposit that comes much later on um, as we get closer to the final and legal um, agreement is a, is a purchase-sale agreement. And that's where the, the terms and conditions are mainly just an intention. It's not a binding, the, they become binding in the purchase-sale agreement. So that's later.
The word "non-refundable" does appear in the doc.
So in, so as, there are non-refundable deposits as you go down in the schedule and as you get closer to the actual sale, then there, then there are deposits that do become non-refundable in the initial part.
Yeah, but what we heard earlier
Yes.
That the seventy-five thousand dollars is refundable.
Yes, in the, right, yes, okay.
It's at this stage.
At this stage that we're in.
And I think that we discussed that as an option early on. We brought that up, that we wanted to make sure that that was a refundable, for the same reasons that she's mentioning.
Yeah. Were there any other questions that you all had on the process or?
Well, I, I have a question real quick on, um, what Heidi's bringing up on "primarily" under "generally," and the second one appears to be in reversion due to violation of the permitted use. Does, does changing that word read slow down the process tonight? Or is that a problem to, I mean, do we have to run that through legal? Does it, does it change?
So again, the terms and conditions are, the terms and conditions that are put out there as the intended desired terms and conditions. The legal document is the purchase-sale agreement. And so these terms and conditions are not written in formal legal language at this point. They get codified into a much longer, longer, longer document with all kinds of
Yeah.
legal language around them. When you get into the um, sale purchase, you could go. So we are still, we've been in the motion. We're still in
Process.
Yes, so we're still in our Deer Park working group meetings and having conversations on this.
So no action has to be taken on that in order to slow it forward.
It doesn't.
Process, it just is what it is.
Not a legally valid.
For the record, that second word "primarily" is under "general," and the second one is "reverts" um, due to a violation of, of permitted use.
On that page.
Just for the record.
And if I can add to one of the convers, part of the elements of the conversation we do have because we now have MCOE involved in their due diligence. They're looking at um, July sometime. And um, so when we were talking about uh, the potential of, in our timeline, of the deposit being non-refundable as the process goes forward, that we clarified with the Children's Center during the Deer Park working group meeting, that we absolutely would not keep their money if MCOE's coming um, onboard and is able to do it. But because we're traveling down the paths to see this through, that we're keeping the, the path. Yeah, um, in the timeline we have with the Children's Center as we're um, moving forward also with um, MCOE to see um, if they're gonna be able to be a viable um, option in this um, process as well. But we assured them that we absolutely would not have that deposit become non-refundable if MCOE is continuing along.
And John Carroll has joined our uh, working group meetings. So it's, I mean, I have to say, as far as having multiple parties who are all looking at a, you know, purchasing agreement, where all, all three of us are sitting together at the table, um, having those conversations. And, and that's really helpful in terms of aligning timing and schedules and making sure that everybody knows what everyone else is doing along those timelines. So we're moving down that path, having very productive conversations with MCOE at the same time that we're having conversations with the Children's Center. And all of us are sitting all at the table together during those conversations so that we're not doing any shuttle diplomacy uh, kind of um, talking, you know, and having to catch each other up on that. So we're all sitting at the same table. Anything else?
Yeah. Can I just add one thing?
Sure.
Finding number one on the Seven-Eleven um, advisory committee report.
Yep.
It's actually on page seven of, of twelve. Or if you're looking at the PDF, it's on eight. It reads, "The overwhelming majority of public input received from public comment during the regular Seven-Eleven committee meetings, focal support at the public input meeting, and written public input throughout the process, all of which is included with the report and the minutes and appendices, supports the Fairfax and Insomo Children's Center, FSACC, at the Deer Park school site. Considering the consistent, considering and consistent with this overwhelming and consistent public support, the committee supports the sale, lease, and land transfer of the Deer Park school site in a manner that facilitates the continued operation of FSACC on-site." I wanna clarify that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just one thing, I don't know if anybody else on the board bothered to go and read all of the comments that, um, the Seven-Eleven Committee made, but I did go and I read all of them that they were received. So I, you know, I was also aware of the overwhelming support in those emails. But I wanna thank you guys for synthesizing all this into a really confined report that kind of distilled everything. And I know there was a lot of meanings and a lot of effort. So thank you to you and the rest of the Seven-Eleven Committee. And it was a lot of effort to pull that all together.
It was also helpful, just process-wise, it was also very helpful to have all of that documentation pulled together so that when MCOE did show up and express an interest in engaging in this conversation, it was kind of all put together because it had been pulled together for the Seven-Eleven Committee process. So I think that actually helped kind of get them up and going faster than would have happened if this happened, which I believe is part of the purpose of having Seven-Eleven Committee and circling a property before you go to sell it is because you do pull together all of this information in doing that evaluation of whether or not to surplus a property. So it's very thorough. You not only understand what you're getting into if you are going to surplus a property, but then you also understand the wholeness of the situation and the property when you go to lease or sell it. So it pulls it all together. All right? If, any other questions or comments before we can entertain the motion?
All right, I will move that we accept, proceed to the Seven-Eleven Advisory Committee Report and adopt Resolution fourteen-twenty-two-twenty-three to declare that Deer Park site as exempt surplus property and commensurizing requirements pursuant to Ed. Code seventeen-four-eight-five, and then find the sale of Deer Park site exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Hold on a second. All right, motion and a second. Rachel.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
Daniel.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Shelley.
Hi.
All right. We will continue to move the process forward with that act and um, just direct staff then to continue with the notifications for the Naylor Act entities and get that clock moving. And then we will, I'm sure we will be back here again uh, for an update. So, thank you.
I have to head out.
All right. I know Rachel, you are going to head out.
Yeah, I will text you. I'll text back to me to say, hey.
So Rachel is going to head out and we'll be back.
Yeah, we got her.
No problem. And we will go ahead and move on to a staff presentation on local indicators.
Can I go up to the door?
Yeah. Good to see you.
All righty. So we are um, required to present our priority indicators separately from the LCAP, and that's what we're going to be doing. And so the LCAP, the Local Control Accountability Plan, is based on eight state priorities, and these are the eight priorities. And of those eight priorities, five of them are local indicators. Basic conditions of learning, state standards, parental involvement, school climate, and course access. And so for these indicators, we use internal measures to determine our progress. And we actually, I brought these indicators to you in the fall
Yeah.
and showed you that we have met all of these indicators. But just going a little bit deeper in terms of how we um, meet these different priorities. For priority one, basic con- conditions, um, we analyze teacher credentials and we have determined that all of our certificated employees are appropriate credentialed within their assigned roles. We have a facilities in, inspection tool, the FIT. Received a good rating thanks to Chris Carson. Um, and all of our students have access to instructional materials for our district programs. Priority two, which is about implementing state standards, we have, of course, our CASP results. We have local benchmarks, quite a few different assessments that we are using to measure progress particularly in English Language Arts and Mathematics. We have um, our Common Core line instructional materials, and we provide professional development particularly in the areas of math and English Language Arts. Priority three, parent and family engagement. We have um, sent out a survey to our parents and guardians using Panorama Education. Thank you Director Eric Sable for spearheading those efforts. Um, and we use the survey results to help inform um, how we can improve our practices at each of our sites. And then we also look at our parent ed- education engagement and also participation levels in our various groups and committees such as D-LAC, our District English Language Advisory Committee, our Superintendent's Council, which includes um, parents and guardians from PTOs, PTA's, Site Council, our Racial Equity Task Force, and again, our D-LAC um, representation from them, um, and then Site Council and Parent Club. Priority six is school climate. And again, we look at our survey results not only from our parents and guardians, but also from our students and our staff. Um, and this is also where we take a look at chronic absenteeism and school suspension rates. And then priority seven is our final local indicator, which is access to a broad course of study, which we measure by using our student information system reports um, through ARES, which is the name of our student information system. Looking at master schedules, report cards, elective signup sheets, making sure all students have access to all areas of study that we offer. And then the final thing to know is that our priorities are embedded in our LCAP. And so when you see the measures on the LCAP listed under them are the um, priority numbers that reference the priorities that we just went through. And this is simply an informational presentation. And so if you have any questions about your local priorities, feel free to ask them now.
I just had a question. I noticed you had the California Healthy Kids Survey up there, and then we also have the Panorama. So I was just wondering if you could say a little bit about the different, how many, which surveys are we, are we using both or, and then are we using Youth Truth and how's that all?
So we don't use Youth Truth.
Okay.
But we do use both Panorama, this is our second year using Panorama. And that's a survey that we'll be using every year, whereas California Healthy Kids. And these are all surveys that Eric um, oversees the administration of. So feel free to chime in, Eric. Which grade levels is California Healthy Kids?
Healthy Kids is fifth and seventh.
Okay.
And that's given every, every other year. And we do it as best practice anyway. It was also something that the TOBE grant, um, that we're in year four of, also requires every two years. And we, but again, that, that generally, there'd be no reason to not give it. It's, it's good data. So that's fifth and seventh graders. And then um, for the, the Panorama survey, and we had one of our manor orders who's an enthusiastic survey taker. Um, and also because of course kids wanna dig in and, and have their voice heard and provide their input. That's how we get better. Um, and that's how they self-advocate, so that was cool. Anyway, uh, we'll get her on the committee next year. Um, so um, that goes to third through fifth, and then all the middle schoolers as well for, for those students.
Thank you.
And, and it, it's been cool too. As Julia said, we did last year, didn't we this year? Now we're able to start to look longitudinally, have the same questions year over year, and see where we can move a needle, as they say.
Am I reading that correctly? That over twenty-five percent of Hispanic-Latinics kids were chronically absent during twenty-one, twenty-two score?
Well, I have to look at it on here because I can't see that part. Very, very bottom. So I'm sorry, I just gotta pull it up.
Can you just see data from here? Where are we looking? Very bottom of column two.
Column two, third last line.
Oh, here.
Yeah. Twenty-five percent. So chronically absent means ten percent of the year, yes, so eighteen days.
Yeah, chronic, whoa.
And I, I mean, this is, this has been an interesting piece because um, there's a lot of absenteeism right now. And a lot of that is because of COVID, right? Kids are out a lot um, and for longer periods of time. But there is disproportionality there.
Yeah, I mean, go from five and two percent to twenty-five percent. So, um, I mean, my, my wells are turning on several layers. So you've got absenteeism, which is, you know, they're missing out on school. You also have, you know, no kids in seats. But the disparity between those numbers, I'm just wondering what type of, we take this data, what type of intervention do we try to do with numbers like that? That's a real outlier. You know, I, I just was just wondering like what, what we can.
I think for the most part, principals are really well aware of which of their kids are chronically absent, and then trying to address it through a number of different modalities. But really just understanding what the needs are, what the family needs are. Why, why kids are staying home.
Going to the column on the right, does that say California at large? Had higher levels of absenteeism? Is that the two thousand twenty-two CA dashboard results?
Oh, oh, yes.
Yeah.
So at the state level?
So that's state.
Yeah. You can look at it, if you go onto the dashboard, you can also pull up a comparative tool. Like, do you wanna drill down on a lot of this?
Yeah.
Sometimes it's helpful to do that comparative tool
Yeah.
overall to look at that kind of thing too.
I came in when I first got on the board and went through that with Julie. I was sat and dug down in that. But I, it just was a number that just
Yeah.
really sticks out for so many reasons.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, I think it's clear. I mean, now we got, moving to the rest of the LCAP, anything else? No public comment? So we don't need to worry about public comment before moving on to the next item? Which is the LCAP, the Local Control and Accountability Plan, which this leads right into. Tonight's a staff presentation, a public hearing on this. So tonight is not action on the LCAP. It is simply um, just a presentation. Yes, and as such, um, because we have two, uh, this is agendized twice per Education Code Section four-two-one-two-seven and five-two-zero-six-two, two separate governing board meetings held at least one day apart are now required for the school district budget hearing and the budget, sorry, the budget one.
They're the same.
Oh, so they're, they're required for um, hearing, for the budget hearing and budget adoption. In addition, the LCAP public hearing must occur at the same meeting as the budget public hearing, which we have on our agenda as well tonight. And the LCAP adoption must occur at the same meeting at the budget adoption. So the LCAP item must precede the budget item at each meeting. The public hearings require seventy-two hour public notice, and both the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four budget and the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four LCAP must be adopted on or before July first. So.
Tonight is our public hearing.
And do I open the public hearing now, or do we hear the presentation, then open the public hearing? Open the public hearing. So I now call the public hearing open.
And there's nobody here in the audience?
No.
So therefore, can you call the public hearing closed?
Okay, so now I will. Okay, so now I will call the public hearing closed. And we can move uh, to the item and any further discussion or next steps.
All right. Um, so as you all know, the um, the LCAP is our Local Control and Accountability Plan. It's a critical part of California's Local Control Funding Formula, or LCSFF. It is a three-year district level plan that is updated annually. And this is the um, third year of our LCAP plan. So next year, you can anticipate us building a new LCAP um, with new or revised LCAP goals. And we already spoke a little bit this evening about the eight priorities, but it's also important to recognize that the LCAP addresses the needs of all of our students, but most particularly specific student groups, including English learners, foster youth, and low-income students. And all of that takes place within the eight priorities. And the Ross Valley School District has three LCAP goals. Um, our first goal is our Academic Achievement Goal, and has to do with assessing student learning in mathematics and English language arts, um, English language development, and providing interventions and supports as needed. Our second goal is lifted straight from our Racial Equity Mission Statement to create a safe, equitable, and inclusive learning environment in which all students feel a sense of belonging, are respected and celebrated for their individual differences, and are empowered to thrive socially, emotionally, and academically. And then our third goal is our Engagement Goal, to engage in a continuous cycle of collaborative input and feedback involving colleagues, students, parent guardians, and parent guardians on the climate and learning, learning experience of all students. Um, and so what this slide does is it takes the first goal and shows you our progress um, in terms of uh, what we've done towards this goal. And um, we also spent time aligning the LCAP goal with one of our um, anti-racist outcomes within the Racial Equity Action Plan. So the anti-racist outcome is that academic performance data will demonstrate the elimination and/or reduction of the predictability of learning outcomes based on race, gender, disability, home language, and socioeconomic status. Um, and so things we did this year. We implemented a new assessment management system called Forefront. Um, we worked with a coach named Von Nguyen on incorporating more problem solving into our mathematics program. We piloted a new um, middle school science curriculum and a new middle school math curriculum. The science curriculum is called Open Science Ed, and the math curriculum is called DESMAS. We developed core beliefs for literacy instruction. We piloted a reading screener called DIBELS or M-Class with our second grade students. That screener will be expanded um, next year to be, to include first grade as well. Um, we implemented English language development progress reports. We selected decodable texts, which will be used in our kindergarten, first, and second grade classrooms next year. We engaged in many, many weekly site data conversations. Um, we increased reading intervention services at our elementary sites. We adopted a reading intervention program called SUNDAY. Um, and we provided coaching for eighty-one percent of our elementary classroom teachers. Um, that was the work of our MTSS partners. All us, all of that.
Uh-huh.
Wow. We're busy. Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit more about SUNDAY and what that means to this deal? Like, an example of how it was utilized?
Yeah, so SUNDAY is a phonics program um, for our earlier learners um, that just provides explicit instruction. And it's, it's kind of more intensive program, more intensive instruction with more practice for the kids. And so our intervention teachers um, use the assessment data to determine which kids, you know, and also teacher input are in need of that tier-two support. And then it's, it's an instructional program that has been found, it's research-based, and it's been found to be useful and really help to move the kids forward. Any other questions? All right. And then along with our goal two, our wellness goal, the anti-racist outcome, that all district staff um, will continue to participate in professional development in order to increase their capacity for examining biases and eliminating inequitable practices. Um, and so this year, we continued with the implementation of our Racial Equity Action Plan two point O, and we are now just getting ready to build three point O for, for the year to come. We went deeper with our social justice book bundles in, in K five. Um, all of our teachers had training on LGBTQ plus awareness. We launched a year-long study of culturally responsive teaching in the brain by Zaretta Hammond. We worked towards improving student outcomes by focusing on the needs of one or one or two students. Um, and this was done through work with vocal students. We engaged in monthly MTSS team meetings for intervention and English language learner or multilingual learner, learner support. And we planned for the implementation of our Anti-Bias Grant. And we developed and approved an equity board policy.
All right.
So you've been busy.
Yeah.
And then for our final LCAP goal, um, the associated anti-racist outcome is to create space and structures to engage in courageous dialogue around issues of races that pertain to classroom practices, school and district structures, policies, and procedures. Um, so we engaged in data conversations based on our Panorama student surveys. Um, and that gave us a lot of information about sense of belonging um, and how that is experienced, and we broke that down by student groups as well. We administered year two of our Panorama Student and Family Surveys. Um, we held ELAC or um, English Learner Advisory Council, thank you Eric, meetings at each of our sites, or had a couple of our sites paired with each other. But we, we brought that D-LAC order to the site. Um, we developed DEI groups, diversity, equity, and inclusion groups at all of our sites. Um, or incorporated DEI work into structures that already existed at school sites, such as Parent Club and Site Council. Um, we implemented an equity lens for site-based activities. We purchased translation devices for each site to use, and we continued our teacher leadership work and collaboration with our, with our teachers through our work with Delight.
I was just gonna highlight the ELAC meetings, that pairing. I, I really appreciated that approach because technically speaking, some of the sites, we wouldn't be required to do an ELAC. And I, I felt that that was a creative and um, great example of going above, of, you know, being able to be inclusive of all of the sites, even if they didn't technically meet particular requirements for having to have.
Yeah, only two of our sites have the requirement, but all of our sites want to make sure that there's opportunities for those families to have some affinity time within, within their sites. And then for sites where there are fewer families, it's nice for them to be able to broaden that group.
Yeah.
And really connect with one another, especially since they'll all end up at Weyal together.
Yeah.
How are the translation devices working?
I know, I don't, I don't have a lot of information on that, but I do know of this beautiful example at um, one of our sites where we have a kid who um, has come in having no English, and kid to kid they're using it, which I thought was really neat. Um, so this is a device where um, it translates, you know, back and forth through the headphones at, like, with a little bit of delay after someone speaks. Um, and so I think teachers have used it a little bit, but I particularly loved that example of students um, being able to converse when they would not normally be able to converse.
That's great. It made it be fun.
That's great, totally.
And not just stuff, and they can do a lot.
Decodering kind of way.
The devices themselves are definitely in beta mode. You know, they, they still, they've got work to do. There, it's a really great tool. It's, it's not a full solution, but I think that they're really useful.
That's good.
Great.
And the good part is because they are cloud-based, that any upgrades that the company makes to their product, um, it comes in real time.
That's good.
Great. All right. And just closing with, you know, some of our ongoing challenges. Definitely hiring for new and open positions, particularly classified. Um, we still have open positions that we've had open all year and have been difficult to fill, and we're now deep, deep, deep into hiring season and having lots of successes, but, but working very hard for those successes. We do not have um, the number of applicants that we once had, no district does. Um, so it's just tricky right now. Um, always the challenge is to close the opportunity or achievement gap between our different student groups. Um, and really recognizing the need for more and more social, emotional support of our students. We recently um, had a meeting with our Delight team, and the teachers talked about the challenges that they continue to experience of just the impact that COVID and the pandemic has had on kids. Um, and the support that kids need around their social interactions with one another, their ability to be in a classroom and do school. Um, you know, it's just, it's just a part of our challenge. Um, and then in terms of next steps, we'll be, as I said, developing our um, twenty-three, twenty-four Racial Equity Action Plan, which we're looking towards um, making it a little bit more streamlined and in close alignment with the Anti-Bias Grant project as well. Um, we are delving into training our teachers on structured literacy and the science of reading. Um, we're in a conversation with a couple of different consultants that can work with us on that, but really wanting to make sure that all of our teachers are trained in best practices for reading instruction. And so that will be rolling out as well. Again, launching our History, Social, Science, Ethnic Studies Project. And we've worked all year long on our MTSS and have made um, tremendous progress, I would say, in terms of getting our systems in alignment, our protocols and our practices, um, making sure that our tier-one interventions and our tier-two interventions, that we're holding on the same strategies or instructional materials that are being used across all of the sites. Um, looking at progress monitoring, looking at the assessments that we're using. All these different pieces, especially those that you saw in that first slide that were around academics, are really interwoven and connected. Um, so, you know, finding the right assessment, and then how are you housing that data? And then how are you using that data to inform what interventions are needed? And then what materials are you using in order to support those interventions? Um, it's all, it's all connected, and we're not done, but we really have made a lot of progress this year. Um, so looking forward to continuing with that work. And I think that that is that. Any questions or thoughts?
One of the questions I had when I was kind of looking at all of this preemptively was um, and tying back to our mission statement and our, our Racial Equity Policy. I see that there, the, the, we, we want to get back to the pre-pandemic numbers, right? Especially for the low-income, socially economically disadvantaged, mainly Hispanic Latinx kids. What, and I know that's an academic focus, but what kind of emotional support is also being intertwined in there considering that there was a lot of that impact to the kids as well? Just, just curious about that.
I mean, I know, I know that our principals have worked really hard to provide kind of a whole school structure for SCL supports this year in terms of, you know, introducing mindfulness activities or um, just different kinds of practices and protocols that support kids and help kids um, regulate. Um, and then we, you know, we, we did expand our counseling program at the elementary level. So every elementary school has a halftime counselor, um, and that provides a lot of support for our kids. And, and the counselors are working on um, really providing school-based counseling and resources for teachers and meeting with small groups um, to support kids. But it, it continues to be a conversation, really, about how, how we best meet the needs um, of our kids, especially those who had just a more difficult time during the pandemic, due to family circumstances.
Yeah, there's a, there's a whole level of the drink that's going to be stunted. And that stunt, the problems are going to continue on up. So the class of whatever is going to continuously.
Well, we talk about, you know, accelerating learning and accelerating the academics, but there is this need, right, to kind of accelerate that social, emotional well-being.
Yeah.
Um,
Yeah.
at that same time. And this is what everyone is grappling with.
Yeah.
You know, Ross Valley, every district, everywhere. And I believe strongly in the resilience of children. And we are seeing growth, but I, I think that it's taking longer than particularly our teachers that are on the ground doing the work um, might have imagined that it would take, and particularly so with the social, emotional, almost more so than the appetites.
Yeah. True. Thank you.
With this item, we're gonna, this will come back next meeting as well. So it's a two-hearing, and that's at the point where we.
One hearing.
When your next one is for approval.
Okay, and of course, there's public comments.
Right.
At each, with each item.
Yeah.
Yes.
Anything else? Any other questions?
Uh, for me, I'm a visual learner. I learn more seeing this broke down like this than I could read on my own. Uh, but having you bring me through it with the, um, it just reminds me of how far we've come uh, in this, in this area, and how mindful all this stuff really is. It's very, very impressive. Um, and, and it's, and it's, it took me a while to really kind of get my head around the, the, just the breadth of really what all this is. Um, but it's, it's, it's quite impressive, and the presentation is very clean and easy to understand. And, and, and it's important.
Thank you. And all of those accomplishments are representative of the incredible work that our staff, our certificated staff, our administrators, and our class staff are all doing. Especially coming. Many, many, many.
Cover work.
Yeah.
Hours of really devoting their time to doing.
It's, it's impressive.
Yeah.
Really is.
And it really shows, like you said, the dedication to helping students move through and beyond and wrapping them in all of that support coming out of COVID. Thank you. All right. We will move on to then item number four, which is the staff presentation of public hearing on our um, preliminary twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four district budget and multi-year budget projections for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, and twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six is, is a public hearing topic today, May thirty-first. And as such, um, per Education Code, EC Sections four two one two seven and five two zero six two, two separate governing board public meetings held at least one day apart are now required for the school district budget hearing and budget adoption. In addition, the LCAP public hearing must occur at the same meeting as the budget public hearing, and the LCAP adoption must occur at the same meeting as the budget adoption. The LCAP item must precede the budget item at each meeting. The public hearing is required twenty, seventy-two hour public notice, and both the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four budget and the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four LCAP must be adopted on or before July first. I will now call the public hearing open. Seeing no one in our audience this evening, I can now call the public hearing closed. And we will move the item to discussion and um, to discussion, presentation, presentation and discussion.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening on the adopted budget. You know, it sounds like you just heard me talking about budget.
Budgets, budgets, all budgets.
So what we'll be talking about this evening are the budget timelines, the demographics, the assumptions, the revenues and expenses within the budgets, and the multi-year projections. What we'll be looking at first are the budget timelines. And it's important to note that we have first the state timelines, which then dictate the school district. So when looking at the state budget timelines, the governor will provide a January, by January tenth, the governor's January um, proposal for the coming school year, or the coming. or the coming fiscal year for the state. He then, or she would then provide a May 14th. By May 14th, a governor's may revise, which would then be used to finalize your budgets. And then by June 15th, the legislature must pass the budget and the governor must sign it by June 30th. So that's the, that's the state's timelines. Our timelines, we basically have a budget due every single quarter. And the timelines are by June 30th, we have to adopt the adopted or estimated actual budgets. By September 15th, we have to do our unaudited actuals, which is closing the books for the previous school year. December 15th, we have what's called our first interim budget and it shows our actual data as of October 31st. By March 15th, we have our second interim budget, which shows our actual data through January 31st. And then we just start the whole process over again. All of that is directly related to the timelines from the state. So as we were developing our budget, we looked at our demographics. And this is something that we've shown a lot of in terms of our enrollment. We noticed is a drop in our enrollment. And we do start to see a leveling off based upon the demographic information that we have out there. Looking at cohort data and also looking at our transitional kindergarten expanding. So we see that there's kind of a leveling off, but we do show a slight drop between 2223 and 2324. When looking at our P2 ADA, our P2 ADA is the average daily attendance that we take. That is, it's basically the last month, March 31st. And that's what we basically more or less get paid on. It's important to note what our P2 ADA is because again, that's how you're being paid. What they did is they changed our funding well to have a three-year average of our, to include a three-year average. So really what you're funded on is your current year ADA, average daily attendance. So it's the higher up, your current year ADA, your prior year ADA, or the average of your three prior years. And looking at us, whichever is higher, whichever is higher. And because we are higher as a three-year average, we see that we're 2324, we're at 1762. That is lower than our current year, which is 1880. But all of that is lower than where our actual attendance is. And you see them starting to, to normalize. And all of that has an impact upon our revenues. The other thing that is important to note is the differences between, because we're stating from the district, what will be considered our funded cost of living adjustment into the LCFF, as well as taking a look at what we're actually funded in terms of revenues plus our parcel tax. The reason I throw parcel tax in there is because that, thanks to the, the taxpayers of San Soma Fairfax, they passed the parcel tax and those are generously provided to the district for first half as well. And when looking at it, we might have had a COLA, a cost of living adjustment in 2223 to 13.26%. But where we're actually coming in is 7.69, slightly, slightly varying from what we had shown before. 765, I think is what I had previous. Next year, we do have an 8.22% COLA on our costs of, or the revenues that they're providing per student. The problem is when looking at our total revenues, because that funded ADA is dropping. You see us going down to only a growth of 1.83%. You also see us actually going negative in 2425 in terms of revenues. So at this particular point, we're showing our revenues would be less in 2425 than in 2324. So those are just important things to keep in the back of our mind.
So I'm looking at 2024, 25, or 25, 26, or it goes back to 3.6. What creates that jump again?
Uh, part of that has to do with growth, a slight growth in funding is what we're showing. Just a slight bump in our attendance.
Okay.
In that third year.
So it correlates with the attendance.
Yeah, because it's not just how much you're getting per student. It's also, there's other factors. See, the other factors are your average daily attendance, if you might grow up a little. But also things such as your unduplicated pupil count. So you get more money if you have a high unduplicated pupil count, which is a measure of your English language learners, your foster youth and your students living in poverty. And then there's one other thing that happens. We always talk about our LCFF, our LCFF, our LCFF. It's hard for me to say how much it is per student because as I had shown in previous meetings, the amount that we get varies in terms of revenue per student based upon their grade level. And so as their grade levels fluctuate, so too does your dollars.
Kind of knew that I was gonna wait for the end, but this seems like a good place to ask my question. You know, we're talking about ADA and I know that that's the primary way we're funded. And I look at those other things we talked about, about how, how our chronic absenteeism seems to be kind of high. And as I, in my limited knowledge of how this actually is happening in regard to COVID and the remainder of COVID, my question is, is could our, could we or do you expect that it's possible to see an increase in attendance as we distance ourselves further from the COVID, you know, as the remainder? So is that kind of why this is expected to churn back up again as that comes into thought process?
That's also part of it. Because as you look further out, you see our attendance.
It's coming back up, right? Because those are, those weren't, I've never seen numbers like that from chronic absenteeism.
No, and, and that's, a lot of it has to do with the way we've been told now that if you have the sniffles, you stay home. And so that does hopefully to the chronic absenteeism. And this isn't unique to the Ross Valley school district.
No, no.
If you look at the state's attendance rates.
The, the numbers that you saw are from not this current year.
Yeah.
From the prior year. And our overall absenteeism rate that year was 14.3%.
Yeah, but absenteeism is still very high this year. Am I right? Am I right? And, and I think as we start to.
As we get farther and farther.
As we start to put it more in the rearview mirror, that those numbers start to just increase and that's.
And, and you bring up an excellent point. So if we have the same number of students this year as next year and we increase our, our attendance rate by one percent, our local control funding formula revenues will also go up by that one percent. Plus your, plus your cost of living. So you're, you have more students.
Well, you know, that's.
Your ADA goes up.
I know this is in the middle of your report, but that's a good note for us to actually start to message, promote, you know, the old way is the old way of absenteeism, but now we need those butts in seats and let's, let's set attendance records and really.
But I wonder if it's not just illness, it's also possible work environment. Or families like, hey, let's just go away for a three-day weekend and we can pull our kids out because we know that they can still get the learning. And so I think there's not just illness, but it's, it's people just, parents perhaps just taking their kids out of school more frequently for.
Yeah, and I, I think it's like an outreach.
Parents from, they're calling them, you know, their children's mental health days.
Yeah.
So having them stay home too for reasons other than illness.
Yeah, I think in, you know, as we talk about marketing and reaching out and outreach to kids and getting people in here, I think that that is equally important for us as a board to make sure that we really, we are really messaging this to parents that we, you know, set records, like maybe a contest for the schools.
Assisted this year for our attendance.
Are we doing any type of, and this is way off. Are we doing any type of competitions for, I remember 100% attendance in school, you get a free
Yeah.
thing to swirl or any type of attendance?
Yeah, we should future topic that.
We barely briefly talked about that, but that can get, become an inequitable practice. And so in and of itself, there are some children, it's out of their control as to whether or not they're going to make it to school on a given day. And so. From a whole, from a whole school perspective, I do think, I think you guys have done a fantastic job with the budgeting and the information. And I, and a future topic in terms of communications going forward.
Yeah, a future topic would be taking this information that we obviously need to know in depth and boiling it down to succinct communications. Because a lot of it is also just habit and coming out of COVID is going to take a number of years of building up, and building up new habits and new ways and understanding the implications of students staying out. While at the same time also recognizing that health is definitely still super important in terms of not sending kids.
Yeah.
Health is important, but I also think that if we want to address the population that decides that take that Friday off, that our messaging, although it's true, isn't about how it impacts the district, but the data on how it can actually impact the child.
Child.
Because I think that the parents will be more responsive. And there is data, I believe, when children's learning.
Disruption.
Disruption does affect their overall academic outcomes.
It can become a habit.
We don't keep really grades, A, Bs and Cs. The kids don't have that reality until middle school. And I think especially at the younger level where it's easier to take these kids out of school when they're seven or eight years old, sending that message that this will impact them later on. I think you might, we might get more, you know, the boat. And it's true data.
And maybe not actually making it a school versus school, so it becomes inequitable. Maybe just make it a district-wide volume, like we can support, like maybe something like the whole attendance. Everyone combined, all five schools combined reaches a target goal, which we can give out like that little thermometer. You know, they, they, you know, we get a, we get a universal something for everybody, a win. Like a competition for the, for everyone included, all schools competing together for one goal. That's, that's future topic.
Did also hear from our parents at the superintendent's chats as we were going around that they would love to know kind of what the percentage impacted and what that impacted on the budget. So we've been talking about how to best put that together. And then in a timely nature of our conversation, Daniel and I, as representatives in the district, did meet with Target River, which is a, a marketing company. And so we'll be looking at bringing back a proposal to the board at the June 14th meeting, which there, it's a different support than what school meant, what we did last school year. They actually have PR people and marketing folks who they do this. So they can take all of this detailed budget information, LCAP and everything. And the messaging for social media, those outgoing messages.
I think we definitely put that on a future topic.
Yep, that will, we'll come back.
Thank you for doing that.
Good communication will come back.
Sorry to hijack your port, but.
Great.
Good timing.
Excellent.
Actually jumped right into the.
God, I'm so excited about the budget information. Attendance.
Go ahead. We know, talk about the budget.
Uh, the next thing that I wanted to talk about are our assumptions. What you'll note here is you can see all of our funded cost of living adjustments at the top. And you'll note that 13.26 in the current year drops down to 8.22%. And then you see numbers that are in the three percents. What's important to, to note for everybody is that those 13.26% and the 8.22%, those are historically high numbers in terms of looking at the data. I've shown that in the past. And so those lower numbers that you see in the out years are more than norm, not, not what we currently have. The other thing that as you look, you see that I've shown our parcel tax, what our funded ADA is. I, I want to make sure that we always talk about our funded ADA because that does impact our revenues. When looking at the costs that as we look at our cost movement forward, we adjust based upon the consumer price index. And so those percentages are shown there. In terms of our, our salary and benefit costs, one of the major drivers of our benefit costs are our retirement systems. So you note that we have our STIRS and PERS for STIRS for the teachers, PERS for classified staff. The STIRS numbers are unchanged, but you do see changes on the PERS side and also some changes on the SUI side. There's some drops in data.
Does PERS ever cap out like STIRS and SUI?
No, actually, so STIRS is built into law. And so it would take a change in the law to get those to, to change. PERS is done based upon an actuarial study every year. And so they tell you every year.
And is SUI capped out or is that?
SUI is based upon unemployment. So the reason it spiked, we were down around the 0.05 prior to the pandemic. It spikes to the half a percent due to the pandemic and is dropping back down.
And this parcel tax is the existing one, not the assumed one that we're thinking about?
Correct. And the thing I want to talk about with parcel tax, we do have an inflator within the parcel tax language of three percent. But we also have every year due to aging population, people that put in requests to be dropped out from it. And so we, we do have a fairly large exemption number. And so that's the reason we've got the two percent. So if it does look like we're going to come in a little bit higher, we would adjust that. But that's kind of the number that we use based upon that information. So that's our assumptions and everything is built based upon those. When looking at our revenues and our expenses, this is our total general fund. What you'll notice is that our local control funding formula is our single largest source of revenues. And the second largest source of revenues are the parcel tax funds. That's why I've noted that several times in each other percentage. And then you get into state funds, federal funds and other local.
Our local including YES Foundation.
I was just gonna say that, sorry.
Sorry.
That's a great point. YES Foundation is built into the other local. So. And, and then this looks at our multi-year projections in terms of our revenues. One of the things that's really important to note is you, you see a large drop in things like our federal and state revenues. And that's not because we're being shorted, that's because what you have are a lot of COVID one-time funds that are starting to go away and other types of one-time funds, such as 2B grants that are disappearing. And so that's why you see the drop in the revenues and really for no other reason.
And appreciate that you knew that going into the one-time funding. So that as we are now coming out of that one-time funding, it was clearly one-time funding all the way along and that we're not caught flat-footed of like, oh shoot, we expected it for something. So appreciate that you've kept an eye, your eye on that the whole time.
Yeah.
Knowing though that we have some very critical positions being paid out of those one-time dollars that are going away. So we will be making some very difficult decisions. Or not, hopefully the revenues will be, ah, you know, we can transfer the funding.
Yes.
We were looking at that actually, Marcy and I today. So when looking at our general fund expenses, you'll notice that, and this is our total general fund. So this includes the restrictive programs. Because I know Marcy likes to say, isn't that salary and benefits kind of low? That's because it includes a lot of other types of expenses on the categorical side, the restrictive programs. If you look at it simply on unrestricted, we're up over 80% for salaries and benefits. But you're at that high of a number because we are a people business. We're in the, the business of people, our children. And so you would expect our salaries and benefits to be the highest amounts and those are. After that, you have services and other. And then you have your other outgo and supplies and other that kind of fall along.
These are 2324 numbers, right?
These are just 2324.
Okay.
But that services and other outgo is very stable through the, through 2526.
Services and other outgoing, the more or less, yeah. You do see some, some drops initially. But some of that has to do with just the one-time nature of some of those expenses as well. And so you do see that related to your question directly here. If you look at our 2223, you see a drop into 2324. Part of that also has to do with just the, the way we are actually spending dollars. We have positions that are, that we have open that we're not able to fill and we might be filling in with consultant or service contracts. And so right now we put those dollars back into the salaries and benefits expecting to fill the positions. And then as we move on into the year, we might reverse some of those dollars. And that's part of why you see that. And so. And so that's just part of the complex nature of the budget. So hopefully those dollars kind of offset each other, but that's part of what you see as well. When looking at our multi-year projections, um, the one thing I really want to stress that's on here, and you see the note at the bottom, we settled with CSCE on Friday morning. This budget was already put together and done by then. And so these numbers that are shown here do not include any costs of that salary settlement. They do include the costs of the recently approved, um, uh, RBTA contract as well as the, uh, management confidential stuff.
We do show that?
Those are included. One of the things that I probably will do between now and the budget adoption in, on June 14th is actually because those costs for the CSCE, um, um, agreement are material to the budget, we'll be adjusting the budget. So the numbers will not be one hundred percent the same. Uh, they will be changed based on that. And I will clearly show that when I come back and provide a presentation on June 14th. But it's because I want to, I want to make sure our numbers are as correct as they can be. We now know those numbers. So the one thing I do want to point out that without CSCE, if you look to twenty-five, twenty-six, we're currently shown on an unrestricted reserve level of fourteen point five percent of our total general fund expenses. I know that that will be less than ten percent. We do bring those numbers back.
Twenty-five, twenty-six?
For twenty-five, twenty-six. So I, I know that for sure. Uh, we do have a requirement to have a three percent reserve within the state based upon the stance of the budget. But then, uh, the district also has a board policy that says that we would have an additional seven percent. So, um, you know, these numbers are estimates at this point. If you look at my, um, my budget write-up, I also include, uh, an estimate of what I think we're going to actually close around. And the reason for that is because your budget is supposed to be, um, it's an estimate of what you're spending. But the other thing that a lot of people don't know is that when we make our expenses, I actually will get an audit finding if we spend too much within certain categories. Uh, so they look at it by major object code. So salaries and expenses, so it'd be certificated salaries, classified salaries, benefits. And so you always have to have more in your budget than what you're actually spending because your budget is supposed to be worst case scenario.
Yeah.
And so that's the reason for that. You always see that in every budget in, uh, in the state. And so we do show that we are expecting potentially a little bit higher numbers than these when we close the books. And I would expect them to, to be slightly higher. And those numbers are shown in that write-up. And so with that, I believe that is the last slide. I know there were a lot of questions.
You took care of mine.
And so I, it will probably take me about a day worth of time to, to go through and process everything because I have to change basically every form, um, that we have and download the whole system again. So it'll be, uh, a fair amount of work, but, um, it'll be a more accurate budget based upon our, our recent agreement.
And I think it'll be helpful too to do it this way than to, um, approve the budget without it. And then have Chris have to come back and do a forty-five day budget revision in the fall. So this is why, when he asked me which method, I said, please do it this way. If that's amenable to you, then that would be good because then we can open the school year with a really clear idea of what our budget is, um, then. And of course, if something happens at the state level, then he'd be doing a forty-five day budget revision anyway. But it would be based on information from the state, not local information based on, um, a settlement agreement.
I think that makes a lot of sense. And then maybe you won't have to do a forty-five day revision.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Hopefully.
I know you love seeing the budget at every meeting, so I just don't want him to have even more work.
Forty-five budget, forty-five day budget revisions are, have been common for the last couple of years. But they haven't been common before that.
Oh, interesting. So we should think they're normal. Ask you tonight.
One, one of the things I want to make sure we, we future talk about when we talk about the ADA, if we can also talk about the back-to-school nights, like if that's a good way of like bringing a lot of these things up around funding or if there's, I don't know if that's a space for conversations like this with parents. But just how could we utilize a back-to-school nights as a, as a venue to, to teach and coach and encourage people?
I think there would probably be, we should put that, well, I don't know if it's on the next one in terms of the outreach and communications and engagement with parents because I do know that next year, YES and the parent clubs are going to be partnering at those back-to-school nights in the fall. And to then also maybe weave in a little bit of messaging also to distinguish like, here's what YES raises money for, here's what the parent clubs raise money for, and here's the, here's, you know, and then there's the district budget and come next Thursday if you want to learn more about the budget. I wouldn't do too much, but maybe it would be a time to.
Um, I think also because it's really going to be up to the individual school sites with support, um, as they might need it from us. So I would not just wait for a board meeting to do this, but any ideas that you have? Because we will be having our end of the year, um, final meeting on June 20th with all of our administrative team. And I would think it would be a good time to kind of set the stage for what we're going to be working on next year. And so I don't think it has to be done at a board meeting in terms of the things that we'll be doing, um, as staff. So all of your great ideas, just send emails to me.
I mean, you could also.
Compile and make a list.
Wouldn't there be something that Target River could provide as a, as a?
Maybe we might not start with that until recruiting season, really, for the twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah, and we're really, at least in our conversation with them, focusing on enrollment. Um, and so we really need to start the year focused on attendance. Cause our kids who are going to be with us in the fall are going to be the kids who are with us in the fall. So we just need to be sure that they're, um, getting to school, uh, regularly. And tomorrow is the last public health liaison, um, meeting, which is, um, with the county office of ed, Marin County Department of Public Health and all of the school districts to talk about, um, any kind of what's on the horizon around COVID. So when Donna Faulkner, who's been, um, our COVID, um, response coordinator for the district, she'll be attending that meeting and she and I will be debriefing on, uh, Friday or Saturday, um, of this week so that we can start to plan for what may be needed, um, and what's being recommended coming down the pipe. They may not know anything at this time, so may not learn until the fall. But that would be helpful too, um, to know what are going to be the guidelines, um, that are coming out in terms of recommendations for when children are not feeling well. They might be less stringent than they are this year. In talking with Donna just preliminarily, uh, today about what she's noticed, um, in, and working with the school sites too around, um, the testing, there's not a whole lot of reporting of the tests. So we're, we just gave out tests last week for the three-day weekend, um, as an example. But as we're giving them out before every one of our breaks.
COVID tests.
COVID tests. There is not a whole lot of, um, reporting if they did actually use them, they may not have needed them.
Yeah.
They're not just, we're not just randomly testing, you know, at all anymore. But there also is lower test reporting when the Marin County Health Department is reporting, um, a high amount in the, um, the.
Septic system. You know, some of the tests that have gone out, forty-five minute tests, right?
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
They're not the fifteen minutes?
We got one that was forty-five minutes and we're like, it's eight o'clock.
Yeah.
And.
Oh, interesting, yeah.
So I don't know if that's a glitch, but.
Or it's the type of test that was, yeah, because we are taking whatever we can get that's free.
Yeah, exactly.
So, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see what they're.
Yeah, but that would be great. Any ideas you have, um, because it'd be great to start incubating those ideas and planning, um, for the fall. Cause back-to-school night is going to be on us right when we return, you know, five days. Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions on that? All right.
First report.
Thank you, thank you, Chris.
Thank you both.
All right, so we are on to item G five, recommended approval of the district superintendent compensation and health and welfare adjustments for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
This is always awkward when you're talking about yourself. But to follow on the heels of last week's, um, special meeting in which there was the RBTA, the certificated classified management, the, uh, confidential classified, as well as our CDO. Um, now, since you all did my evaluation and it was positive, according to my contract, um, I shall receive the same increase that certificated, uh, management receives, um, uh, when I receive or upon receipt of a status factory annually bill, which I did receive.
Yes, you did.
Last week, so thank you very much, um, for that. And so tonight before you is, um, the same total compensation package as, um, we've talked about last week and has been put on the table as well as agreed upon with, uh, CSCE in our tentative agreement, which is a total of ten point four four total compensation. So, um, along the lines of certificated administration, that would be nine point five four percent on the salary, uh, schedule. Um, and for me, I don't have a salary schedule be in addition to my day salary. Point three six percent is the total percent related to my advanced degree stipend, which I have a master's degree. And then the increase to health and welfare cap, the point four five four, um, with that, um, for a health and welfare increase. And specifically for my salary, um, it means that my salary would increase from two forty-two, zero five zero to two sixty-five, one forty-two. Actually, the two forty-two, that's two forty-three thousand. So I had a typo in there because of my advanced degree stipend, it used to be one thousand. And now it is increased to seventeen fifty. And so two forty-three, zero five zero plus the nine point five four percent and the seventeen fifty, the advanced degree stipend, um, brings my total this year to two sixty-five, one forty-two. Um, and then the employee only increase, uh, for Kaiser and Delta Dental. And then there are no other changes, um, for my contract.
All right, and that's that.
Thank you. Oh, and the AB twelve hundred, um, that Chris had to prepare, I was included in the certificated, um, management. So if this is approved, then he doesn't have to make any revisions to that AB twelve hundred.
Right. Any questions on this particular agenda for clarification? We don't have any, uh, committee members, so we don't have public comment. Just looking around.
Yep.
Okay. There's no questions or comments other than appreciate that, uh, we were able to go ahead and do your review. And as always, just appreciate so much the work that you put in here in this district. Just can't even express it, so.
Thank you. It's my life.
It's, uh, I mean, just seeing everything that's been done, especially over the past couple of years, coming out through COVID and out of COVID and then continuing to move us forward with, you know, all that this district does for the kids, really appreciate it.
And pivoting constantly.
And pivoting constantly, yes.
Community funded, not community funded.
Yeah.
A lot of, oh, there's a lot to juggle. It's appreciated and seen.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended approval of the district superintendent compensation with health and welfare adjustments twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
I have a second now. All right, motion and second. Brian.
Aye.
Rachel.
Aye.
Shelley. All right, Chris.
All right.
Daniel.
Aye.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, um, on to consent actions. We have seven consent actions. Is there anyone who has, um, anything, any edits or amendment to any of these consent actions? They are all as per our normal consent actions and you will kind of.
Oh, there was something I was inside, um, hold on. Uh, for Autumn Arboree, it says two FTE beyond one point oh. That's supposed to be point two, right?
It is.
To clarify.
Yeah, thank you.
She's not working.
Yeah.
Uh, extra, yes, so point two, thank you for catching that.
Yeah, sorry. So that's the.
You're aye.
So then.
So beyond that, I had no.
Would that change all of consent?
Got it. For consent item number one with the amendment there for a point two.
Was that, did you make the amendment?
No, we, this is pre-motion.
Got it.
This is a pre-motion.
With the amendment, I'll make, I'll approve the motion to approve consent.
Okay, motion with the amendment.
A second.
I have a second. All right, Brian.
Aye.
Daniel.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Shelley. Aye. Rachel.
Aye.
Okay, consent action approved. And on to board business. Um, we've got approval of the special meeting minutes for May twenty-fourth. Are there any edits or amendments to those minutes? You know, I'm seeing it shaking, no amendments or edits. All right, entertain a motion.
I know that we approve the special meeting minutes from May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
I have a second. Motion and second. Rachel.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Daniel.
Aye.
Shelley, aye. Brian.
I'm staying.
Ah, thank you. All right, board meeting minutes for the special meeting is approved. And now we have a superintendent and cabinet report and updates.
All right, and we'll start with Eric Snable, Director of Student Services.
Please, um, let's see, you know, always lots of action in the spring with transition, uh, IEP meetings and special ed. Um, or we're transitioning kids out of early intervention to the school age program, TKK. Uh, obviously our fifth grader, such as sixth grade, our eighth graders, uh, to the high school. And that includes, uh, children, um, not enrolled in our district that live in our, uh, in our, uh, area of residence, that were, uh, responsible for assessing, um, as, uh, the, the district's special ed accountability. So, um, we may do like evaluation, initial evaluation for an eighth grader, let's say, that attends a private school, um, or is homeschooled. Um, and, uh, and then do so in conjunction with the high school district as a, a part of the transition. Uh, so we're working with kids from all over, some of whom, of course, are in our program, others that are not. Um, and the staff is working incredibly hard. Um, transitions always mean that we're pulling more people from multiple sites together for the most part. Although we also do, um, in-house transitions, if you will, let's say, uh, Brookside with our special day class and the second graders, if it's appropriate, they move up to the third through fifth grade classroom. But in every instance, it's always reopening up the, their IEP and looking at, uh, you know, what's going to be the appropriate set of services in the next setting. Um, and then, uh, trickling into summer, summer, we have our extended school year program, uh, which is for a service, an IEP service for children, um, that may experience regression over the summer months without services. And so, um, we have a couple of staff hired, um, uh, teaching staff, um, classified staff, little service paraprofessionals. We have speech pathologists, occupational therapists. Uh, and, uh, and then we even have some children that get other services like physical therapy. So we just, again, lots of, uh, the smorgasbord of, uh, people coming together to serve the kids. And, um, and it's always really wonderful to see, um, them not just get the instruction and their services. Um, but you know, this, this program is really special because, you know, there's a lot of children, um, that access it that, for example, sometimes might struggle to go to the summer camp, um, or sleep away. Um, maybe with, with some of the, of the things that, um, can be challenges for them and some of those different kinds of contexts. So our ESY program, and again, keep it in mind that all districts can or do run them. And we have other districts that are, uh, asking us if they can place children in our program, which is a nice compliment, uh, but of course we, uh, we're obliged to, um, be considering our kids first. Long story short, um, it's a, it's a neat experience and it definitely gives all those children a, uh, a lot more momentum moving into next year. Um, and then also want to celebrate, um, the work of the, um, English language, uh, learner support team. Um, and that includes Julia, absolutely, uh, as they've been very much involved in, um. And that includes Julia, absolutely. Uh, they've been very much involved in, um, ongoing conversations about intervention and MTSS. The Summit of LPA, um, testing of those closed. Um, and again, just tons of effort working kid by kid. So I want to thank them for all that they've done. For our students and of course the data, um, the, the Summit of LPA, which of course is looking at reading, writing, speaking, and listening. Um, if the students are showing, um, sufficient proficiency, that can be evidence to support them exiting ELP services, moving into HARPFEP status, where they're still monitored for a number of years. Um, but, um, anyway, more, um, more great work from the team. And I think I'll pass the baton.
Julia, would you like to?
Um, a shout out to our tech department, Sean Maher and Jorge Corayana and Paula Goystein, who have been spearheading all of our CASP testing this year. Just doing it. They're making it happen everywhere. Um, all of our sites have begun testing, some have finished up. Um, but it takes a lot of coordination to make all of that happen and a lot of equipment and making sure all the equipment and the headsets and, and everything is going. And it's been super, super smooth. So huge, huge thank you there. Um, and then just a thank you to our coaches, our MTSS partners. They led the release day that we just had with our kindergarten and first grade teachers through looking at, I think we had five or six different decodable tests, um, different decodable test programs for them, to take a look at and select from. So deeply appreciative of that work. There are also, um, Julie McGuire and Melina Olenderger, the coaches, are working with, um, the developer of our assessment management system on aligning the standards that pop up inside the management system to our report cards so that teachers will be able to create a report that matches the report card. It's going to make work a lot easier for teachers and at the same time it's going to make, um, uh, reporting more accurate.
Oh, really?
Sounds good.
Yeah. So just, we've got some really great people supporting us in Ross Valley. Thank you, Julia.
Nice. Thank you. And Chris Carson.
My name's Deefest. Oh, I want to thank our maintenance and custodial staff for preparing all of our sites for the culmination of our hard work at the schools this year. We have all of our promotion ceremonies starting Friday and then next week. And I just wanted to say thank you to them and that'll be all for this evening.
Thank you. It is really hard to believe that, um, this school year is coming up, uh, ending so soon. It feels like, uh, it should be March right now, not June tomorrow. No, it does? No? Uh, so looking forward also to the promotions and, um, wishing all of our, um, eighth graders who are moving on to high school next year, um, it's, uh, going to be a great day to send them off and our fifth graders moving up, uh, to White Hill. The fifth graders who have been attending or will be starting to attend like a stepping up day kind of a, a situation. And it's, um, it's going to be fun. They love their visits, uh, to the middle school. So it's really good that that, um, had, practice has resumed in Ross Valley. I think it stopped for a couple of years and it's great that it's, um, returning. And, um, loved attending Golden Bell last week. So where we got to, um, honor our certificated and our classified, um, Golden Bell honorees as well as, um, Ross Valleys. You remember, we did have the classified employee of the year for the entire, uh, county, um, Victor. And, um, also our parent garden equity task force, who we named as our, um, our community liaison or community partner. And every district was able to select one and that's who, um, Ross Valley selected. So, um, five of our parents did attend Golden Bell to receive the Golden Bell on behalf of their, the task force. So it was just an overall, um, great event. And then Amanda Wagner, our new principal for, uh, Brookside, who's going to start next year. She actually has gone out to Brookside a couple of times already to meet with staff as well as parents and guardians, um, and to meet the kids. She was at field day, um, on Friday. And I just saw today an email that she sent to the staff, uh, just doing a survey as to help her, um, get started there at the school. So we surveyed the staff to, um, get some initial, uh, feedback about what, uh, kind of they're looking for there. And I already mentioned about Target River and so, um, we will be bringing, uh, them back here. We have the opportunity to have, uh, Chris Costa, who's a representative from Target River, to attend the board meeting as well. So if there are any questions, um, he's not too far away. He only lives up in Napa and he's happy to make, um, the trip here. We'd like to have him. So, um, as we're closing out one year, we, um, have already begun, um, planning, of course, for the next, um, school year. And so we're well underway. And with that, I think that is it. And
Great. Um, thank you for all these updates. We are, um, we do not need to go back into closed session after our updates, which is allowed if we needed that.
Are we going to report out on our own stuff?
Well, I
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda this time because we just did it last Wednesday.
I think so. Because it was only a week since that.
And we will have it on June
June fourteenth.
We will have it on June fourteenth?
Keep your notes.
We'll have it, we will have June fourteenth, which is not that far away. It's another, what, two weeks, two weeks away? So, I can put that in. And, uh, the only thing I want to make sure that we get on record is, um, Rachel came back at eight twenty-nine. So we can have Rachel back for the best four because the last little bits there. As far as the meeting review, I know we've added some things for future topics, so I don't think we need to go into that much more of that.
But I think we should put it up on, on
Yes.
for our future topic
That we have, yep.
that we talked about, um, attendance and marketing for attendance.
Yes, yep.
We'll have those two things that we already talked about. And if there's anything else that comes up, let us know. For, um, meeting planning, we will add them on there. Um, and with that, I am going to adjourn the meeting at nine oh two PM.